Aloha Pumehanakako. The September 24th, 2025 Neighborhood Board Number 34 Meeting is called to order. Aloha mai kumoku pune nui o ke ave. Ahiki ini io oka helelani. Bellina and welcome all. To our Makakilo in Kapole Honakai Hale Community Forum. This month is the inaugural recognition by the State of Hawaii of celebrating Hawaiian history. And to do our part, in order to honor Her Majesty Queen Lilio Kalani on her 187th birthday, we will be celebrating by sharing two mele as a special opening and closing of our meeting today. So at this time, I would like to invite our first Vice Chair, Mikayala Lindstone, to introduce and share a few words about our opening mele, Hawaii Pono'i.
Hawaii Pono'i was composed by King David Kalakaua. And in 1967, the Hawaii State Legislature designated this song as the state anthem. And so today, we will start off with Hawaii Pono'i.
And thanks to online virtual Zoom magic we are going to show and ask the choir to help us with this mele. So all those are able to share and sing along with us, please join us with singing Hawaii Pono'i. Mahalo, and now for the advertisement. You should have saw on the way in, we had our community outreach team providing light refreshments for this evening. So if you didn't get to get some of that snacks on the way in, make sure you get some of it on the way out. So before we call the roll, let's go over the ground rules for our community forum. Regarding order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand or your virtual hand and wait for the presiding officer to recognize you. And please introduce yourself once recognized and only address your comments to the chair. Speakers have one minute to comment on any item. Excuse me, speakers have three minutes to comment on any item. Those giving reports this evening have 10 minutes. And those doing presentation also have 10 minutes. The presentation materials have been handed out prior to sharing the Neighborhood Board meeting and is available on our online Google Drive. Please remember to silence your electronic devices if you're here in Kapole Hale in person. And online, please make sure you're muted if you're not actively talking. Please remember that this is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate any of the agenda items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. And let's honor each other by keeping to the allotted times we're speaking and collectively finish our forum in a timely manner. Are there any questions on the protocols and procedures, guidelines, and rules before we begin? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
All right. My check, all right. So for those in the physical meeting space, if you could, please use your microphone when I call your name. For those online, please unmute your virtual microphone. And I'll go on the order I have. Board Member England.
Present.
Dudley.
Here.
Ferrera online.
Here.
Faheli. Lidstone.
Hail.
Maderas.
Present.
T'Alla.
Hail.
And Chair Paris.
Hail.
Chair, you have a quarrel with seven board members present.
Excellent, we can take action this evening. So first off, we have Honolulu Fire Department. And please come on up for the report this evening.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is firefighter Adam Slobaki from Station 40 in Kapole. Just gonna go over our report for September 25. So the statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response search tool on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please email hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. Section one, information previously requested, nothing there. So section two is our incident statistics for August 2025. For fires, structure fires, there were four. Wildland or brush fires, we had 10. Nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle, there were seven. Cooking fires, there were zero. Activated alarms with no fire, there were 25. And next will be emergency situations. So medical calls, we had 173. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, there were zero. Motor vehicle crash or collisions were 18. Mountain rescues, zero. Ocean rescues, one. Hazardous material incidents were two. And next, we move on to our fire safety tips and announcements. So our fire safety tip is charge into fire safely lithium ion batteries in your home. This year, the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA's, Fire Prevention Week campaign works to educate everyone about using these batteries safely. Lithium ion batteries store a lot of energy in a small place. These batteries can overheat, start a fire, or explode if overcharged or damaged. By learning how to buy, charge, and recycle these batteries safely, you can help prevent a fire in your home. So ways that you can prevent this is buy only listed products. So when buying a product that uses a lithium ion battery, look for a safety certification mark such as UL, ETL, or CSA. This means it meets important safety standards. Make sure that you charge your devices safely. Always use the cords that come with the product to charge. Follow the instructions from the manufacturer. Buy new chargers from the manufacturer or one that the manufacturer has approved. Charge your device on a hard surface. Don't overcharge your device. Unplug it or remove the battery when it's fully charged. Make sure you recycle batteries responsibly. Don't throw lithium ion batteries in the trash or regular recycling bins because they could start a fire. Recycle your device or battery at a safe battery recycling location. Visit call2, the number 2, recycle.org to find a recycling spot near you. HFD is hosting a fire prevention family day event on October 4th, 2025 at the Honolulu Zoo from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Bring your family to participate in activities and you can meet our fire and life safety partners.
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the board or the community? Chair recognizes second Vice Chair, Dr. Kionni Dudley.
How would you recognize a lithium battery?
I'll go ahead and forward that question to my Captain Mitch Pang.
The question was, how would you recognize a lithium ion battery? How would you recognize?
Usually, it would, it should say on the outside, Li-Ion on it. But sometimes we don't know because either the wrapping or it's removed. So if you're unsure, worst case scenario, dispose of it as a lithium ion battery. But regular alkaline batteries, you can throw in the trash can. But going back to your question, it should have a marking on it, Li-Ion on it.
Are they the kind that look like regular batteries?
It ranges in size from small batteries and big batteries to car batteries. So we've had a couple of fires that people throw their lithium ion batteries into the trash, which ended up in the H Power. From there, it starts a fire and that's where we responded to the big fires inside of the car. If you're unsure, bring it, you can bring it to the fire station or let us know. If you have any questions, should have a marking on it, though lithium ion.
So are there flashlight batteries that are lithium?
Some of them are, some of them are. Some of them are dual where you can use lithium ion or charge those alkaline batteries. So just gotta be careful when you're disposing of or buying, so.
Okay, mahalo, any other questions from the community or?
I may not have heard correctly, but is there a proper way to?
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, my name's Leslie Keating from the neighborhood. Is there a proper way to store lithium batteries when they're not in use? Should they be connected to the device? Should you unconnect them? Should you put them all in one location? Like, I guess I've heard of people having little things, like someone's, yeah, blew up in the bathroom under the sink or something. So I figured that's a bad place, but I just don't know where is a safe place in the home store those.
Usually, we try not to store them in the house. I know a lot of them, a lot of people store them in either the garage. It should be in a well-ventilated area where it's not too hot. So garage, or if you have a cooler area. But if you see the lithium ion batteries bulging or getting disformed like that, that's a sign that it might be, it might malfunction. So as you mentioned, don't overcharge it. So that's the kind of. What kind of batteries do you have?
For like power tools or have safety? Again, I have all kinds of batteries, ones that are for like my power equipment, like the drills and the weed whacker and the, and I think I have the light thing. But then one is like a something for charging a battery. Like if your car dies, I think that might be a lithium battery. And then I also have other things that are like kind of bigger lithium batteries, like on a vacuum and some bigger appliances and stuff. So there's actually quite a few lithium batteries all about my house in varying sizes from something as small that you can put on your wrist to, you know, I probably have my biggest one about that big. So I do worry about it, but I just don't know, like, and I, I guess I checked my batteries. You know, they're bulging and I haven't seen anything like that, but I don't know where, yeah, where to put these things.
Captain Regan Downey, Kapole, 40. A lot of your batteries or any of the products that you purchase usually come about manufacturers' lips. And it tells you all the instructions about it, how to charge, where to store it. So and it's hard to read sometimes, it's a very small print. But most time, the manufacturer's sending you instructions with where to store it, how to charge it. Go on and, yeah, it should be, it's a little hard to read.
Mahalo, so definitely educating our community members on lithium ion batteries. And for those that are concerned about it, usually lithium ion batteries are in portable devices. That's where you usually find them from laptops, like tablets, your phone. It's like, but it can go for, as Captain said, from peace makers all the way to cars. So like, it's all over throughout our community. And make sure that you recycle them so that they don't have to go work at double duty at H Power. Mahalo for the report.
A lot of times, you don't just charge it and leave it. Monitor it, if you can charge it, make sure it, once it's charged, take it off, store it.
Mahalo, thank you so much. Now let's invite up Honolulu Police Department. Coming to us online.
Hi, good evening. Corporal Corey McKino, District Eight, Community Policing Team. Online, with me is also Sergeant Fumi Maroka and Lieutenant Marino Correll. The crime statistics for the month of August. Motor vehicles deaths for our district was 27. The Kapole area, we had seven. Burglaries for the district was 10. Kapole had two. Deaths for the district was 117. Kapole had 56. Unauthorized entry to motor vehicle, the district was 17. And the Kapole area, there were six. Traffic stats, speeding, we had a total of 266 citations. Moving violations was 412. Parking violations was 84. Total citations issued was 880. Total calls for service for a district was 8,086. And so I believe there might be a typo for total calls of service in Kapole. I don't have the actual number. I think our number might be off because it seems greater than the total cause. But yeah, other than that, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the board or the community at large? Chair recognizes that spring online.
Hi, good evening.
There you go.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I noticed that there are a number of vehicles. The place I happened to notice was along Makakilo Drive. Cars that are parked there and the inspections are a good year, two, three, sometimes four years expired. I would guess that the registrations are out too, although I, you know, I didn't look that closely at the cars. Do the police routinely check that? Is something, is that something that they could do or would do? Or is that something, you know, I want to see these cars. I don't know if they're abandoned or not, and I just want to see, let me back up. To me, if we leave these cars sitting on our streets, it's sort of a sign to, you know, people who are gonna tend to break in or drop off other abandoned cars or whatnot. It just sort of, to me, sends a signal that says, hey, you know, we're not really that concerned about our neighborhood. Go ahead and, you know, do whatever you want here. So to me, it's a little bit of a, sort of a cleanup kind of thing to get these cars out of here. And then it gives other people a place to park or, you know, frees up the street a little bit, takes a few more cars off the road, off the side of the street, which makes it a little more easier to drive. So my question is, do the police, do any sort of maintaining the parking situation to make sure that the vehicles that are parked there are properly registered and inspected and that sort of thing?
Normally, especially in our area, due to the number of calls, I know the patrol officers normally go around routinely looking for the expired tax and safety, however, or abandoned vehicles. However, we do respond to if you may have calls of a particular area, like a cross street you want to give the officers or a particular vehicle in your neighborhood that you know has been sitting there for a long period of time and it's noticeably expired. And those of you can definitely call in, give dispatch the location, and then we can, an officer will come out, either cite it or we can actually mark it for the abandoned vehicle as well. Do you have a particular location or is it just the whole Makakilo Drive area?
Well, I happened to walk up Makakilo Drive the other day and just, just, you know, just glanced at the cars as I was walking by and I was really surprised. There were probably 10 or maybe a dozen cars that had, had tags, you know, the inspection tags, that were at least a year out of date. You know, I don't, I don't care if somebody goes a couple of months or something like that, you know, you forget or whatever. But if a car's been, hasn't been inspected for two, three years, registered for two, three years, that to me sends a signal that something's going on, something needs to be done. So it's just what I noticed and I was kind of hoping that HPD might do a routine check of once a week or something like that, but if you say it doesn't happen, that's okay. All right.
Okay, but yeah, we can pass on the message to the officers that we can have somebody maybe go check it out and then start maybe marking vehicles for abandoned and for the tax and safety as well, yeah.
Yeah, the last thing I want to do is create more work for HPD, but it is a situation that could still be addressed a little bit. So I appreciate your, your time, thank you.
Good thing.
Mahalo. Now let's go to community member Mike Reese, online.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Reese from Kapole. My question is, what if, like your neighbor, say like your neighbors smoking marijuana and the smoke is coming into your house? Even though there are license or say they get the, they get the medical card, is that legal that they can smoke outside their, outside their house or even in the public? Because I work as a security guard and like I gotta face people who come up to me smoking marijuana and like, wow, what do you get smoked that for? Oh, I'm, I have a card, like, I don't like the smell. And to me, in my opinion, that's disrespectful. So is there a law or procedures, rules on that?
So I believe if they have the card, I believe it's supposed to be at the residence with the, I don't think it can be done in the public areas. So, but if it's like noticeably coming into your house, like they're doing it outside, if you can try talking to them or if you want to approach them, you can just call 911 and have an officer come up. And then it can be like a nuisance type call, like the smoke is coming or at least we can address it somehow, yeah?
Yeah, exactly. I hate the smell of it, like, oh my God. Cigarette smell and cigarette in that, honestly. But yeah, thank you for your service, man.
Oh, thank you.
Chair recognizes first Vice Chair, Mikayala Lindstone.
Mahalo, I have a question. There's a homeless encampment up at Pu'u Kapole, which is at the top of Kapole Regional Park. Recently, that it was all cleared out, all the homeless encampments up there. And it was a lot of work to clean it out and to take all the trash out. It took us several days with our students and our Kiki and our families. But the homeless have moved back in that area. Is, is what procedure can we go through to get them removed again?
Like if it's mostly like blocking, obstructing the like public areas, then you can call it in and then if we can address it. As far as camp and sweeps coming, I believe we do have some scheduled in the near future and then we can try to address it then.
Yeah, they're in the bushes. Do you know when your next one is?
Along, along the fence line?
Yeah, they're by the bunker, along the fence, yeah, in the bushes, up on the top of the hill.
Okay, I can pass on the message for that.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes board member Sheila Maderas.
Aloha. Thank you. I do have a follow-up question. I had several questions last board in regards to the tsunami warning in regards to the traffic that went up Makakilo Drive. And with the understanding that we do not have a secondary exit or entry into Makakilo. And my question was, I know that the city and county has identified a safety road. And the question was, did HPD look at that road to determine whether or not it could handle the capacity of all the vehicles coming down that safety road? I haven't seen it myself, but it sounds like it's a dirt road. So just because there is no secondary exit and entry, I think that needs to be looked at and surveyed to determine whether or not it is a safe road for that amount of traffic. So has that been done?
Yeah, I can answer that question. Hi, Sergeant Maroka with Community Policing. So last week, we did do a drive-through of that road. It's a very specific road and there is no MOU at this time, but they're gonna work with the city and state to get that developed and in the future, it will look like, looks like at this point, they're gonna use it for emergency access. If there's a situation where there needs to be a road open and Makakilo Drive is blocked off. So that is in the works. I don't have a lot of details on it, but we did drive through and we're working on the MOU to provide that road for access in the future. I hope that answers your question.
It's a start, thank you.
Mahalo. So just, just follow-up question, did the patrol car make it, make it through? On the emergency access road, okay, good, that's a good start.
Several, several vehicles went through it, the length of the roadway. And we did make sure, you know, it's safe for vehicles. I mean, they have big rigs that go through there every day, all day. So, but we did check it and it's very stable.
Okay, awesome, so.
Mahalo, thank you.
Godspeed on the MOU so we can legally use it. For the city.
It is only for emergencies, yeah, just like Kola Kola passed. It won't just be for, you know, if there's an accident and it's an inconvenience to the community. It'll only really be for real life or death situations, you know, where the whole community's stuck. No emergency vehicles can get through and things like that, yeah. So it won't be open every time there's like a traffic jam or, you know, a bad accident, things like that, yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrera.
Hey there, I wanted to tell you guys I really appreciate the radar trailer being put out on Makakilo Drive. And it's been out there for several days and I'm kind of noticing a difference. People see it and slow down. And that's the primary reason for having a radar trailer out is so that people are aware of the speed that they're driving coming down the hill. So I appreciate the fact that as old as it is, it still works. And it's out there doing its job, so thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry it took so long to get up there, but the legs did rust off and we had to get it repaired. And there's, there was and still is a list of places we have to, that were requested. So we're going one by one and leaving it there for a couple of weeks at a time or so. And yeah, we'll try and, it's good to hear that it's slowing people down and maybe they weren't aware of how fast they were going, so.
Yep.
You know, that helps, hopefully.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Mahalo, any other questions, comments, or concerns for HPD on their report? Seeing none, thank you all for your good work and yeah, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Now let's welcome Board of Water Supply, are they online with us? Okay, we will circle back to them later if they come. Do we have Mayor Rick Blandiardi's new representative online with us? Okay, so two announcements then. Oh, we do.
Aloha Chair, I'm here. However, I think the report was sent in, so I just want to introduce myself. My name's Deborah Zeisman. I'm the Deputy Director for the Office of Economic Revitalization and the new representative from the mayor's office. I apologize, I'm on Zoom tonight, I was just assigned to this a couple of days ago. But I will try to get to future Neighborhood Board meetings in coming months. So looking forward to working with you all. And Chair, I believe somebody from the mayor's office sent an official written report. Good, thank you.
Thank you. So this is our new liaison from the mayor's office. And the mayor's office did circulate their report, which has the mayor's newsletter and reminds all of us about the And reminds all of us about the Charter Commission Review Process. This is the decade process and any recommendations for the Charter Review Commission. Is due by November seventh. Welcome to the team. Appreciate it. Look forward to the homework. Is Hawaii Department of Transportation with us this evening? Okay, how about the Office of Hawaiian Affairs? Okay, now let's go to Ompo. Our liaison to the Citizens Advisory Board. It's Uncle Frank Canario available.
Uh, yes, at the September Citizen Advisory Committee or CAC meeting. Ompo Executive Director Mark Garrity. Talked about outreach sessions aimed at non-drivers to acquaint them with Ompo and help them with their commuting. He mentioned that the Policy Board will meet on twenty-nine September. Uh, the HDOT update of the Navahini Settlement and Draft Energy Security and Waste Reduction Plan. Was briefed by Laura Kahaku. This is an effort to reduce emissions. The state is a leader in a model for the adoption of electric vehicles. And the Hawaii Department of Transportation is committed to electrifying and decarbonizing transportation. A youth council has been created and the year for achieving net zero remains at twenty forty-five. Genevieve Sullivan summarized the goals of affordable energy security and clean fuels. For all transportation modes with hydrogen as the long-term goal for electrification. All state and county light duty vehicles are to be electrified by twenty thirty-five. Multimodal transportation, bicycle and pedestrian initiatives and transit-oriented development will be promoted. Statewide projects will add fifty-two miles of bikeways and forty-eight miles of sidewalks. Uh, the Ompo staff then described scoring for the Oahu Regional Transportation Plan twenty fifty. This is a twenty-five-year plan updated every three years. And the staff is currently evaluating a hundred and thirty projects, a hundred and twenty of them as carryovers. On a one-hundred scale, ORTP projects received between four and seventy-six points. With high-cost projects getting low scores. I will go back to this later.
Who able to hear us and see us now? Anyone online able to hear us or see us now?
Yes.
Okay, right on, brother Mike. Appreciate it. Uncle Frank, I think you're muted if you're talking.
I just, I had trouble. All of a sudden I was muted. I had trouble unmuting.
No problem. Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, go on. Uh, CAC member David Akey discussed the bus plans. For three hundred to four hundred new electric buses coming. And the need to protect chain, charging stations from weather damage and fires. Comments on the ORTP twenty fifty will be accepted by Ompo until three October. I submitted a long comment on why the completion of Makakilo Drive needs to be in the current tip. I criticized the arbitrary scoring system for the ORTP. That gives high scores to bicycle and pedestrian projects. Pointing out ten non-road specific projects. Or me, cost it at more than far four point two billion dollars that are higher ranked than the Makakilo Drive. Second Access Completion Project. Plus one lower-ranked project that directly impacts the non-safety aspect of extending Makakilo Drive. I also pointed out that during the July tsunami warning scare. Is likely that few people bicycled or walked uphill away from potential inundation areas on the Eva Plain. And the backup of vehicles trying to reach higher ground in Makak, ground in Makakilo was monumental. The second access would have significantly alleviated the situation. Or me, for those wanting to support the drive's completion. The ORTP comment form can be found on the Ompo website. I will place its address on chat. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Uncle Frank. Appreciate it and thanks for weathering the technical difficulties. Are there any questions, comments or concerns on the Ompo report from the board or the community at large? Excellent work as always and we got your written report in the Google Drive. So thank you so much. Please comment on anyone that's interested by checking out Uncle Frank's report with the link or if you're on WebEx in the chat. Okay, anyone circling back, anyone from the Board of Water Supply, H dot or OHA? Hearing none. Let's move to the presentations for this evening and we have two. First up is the Walk Bike Drive Program with the Hawaii Bicycling League. Do we have Ms. Paula Bender?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Board Chair. Um, I do have a presentation. I believe I had sent it to you uh. Few weeks ago. However, I can also try to share here on my um, computer.
We can play it on our end. No problem.
Perfect. Thank you so very much. And once that's done, I can um, talk a little bit more and take questions. Mahalo. Thank you, Jeffrey. Hawaii Bicycling League's Walk Bike Drive Presentation encourages road users to drive with aloha. The Walk Bike Drive Program is funded by an H dot grant to highlight the importance of pedestrian and bicycle safety on Hawaii's roads. Whether we walk, bike or drive, safety is everyone's responsibility. The Vulnerable Road Users Law is part of a broader effort to enhance safety on Hawaii's roadways. By addressing the risks faced by those traveling outside of motorized vehicles such as pedestrians and cyclists. So far in twenty twenty-five, the entire state has more than doubled its traffic fatalities over twenty twenty-four. The average number of traffic deaths from twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-four included twenty-eight pedestrians, nearly twenty-eight motorcycles and mopeds. Four bicycles and nearly forty-four motor vehicles. Whether on foot, on a bike or in a vehicle, commuters are a traveling ohana. We recognize license plates, stickers and company logos. We merge with a wave or better yet a shocker. And when there is a crash, we learn just how close we are to each other. Here are a few things to keep in mind when sharing the road with cyclists. Respect the green bike boxes that gives bicyclists a head start on a narrow section to reach the bike lane. Remember, when in a crash, the cyclist will always be more vulnerable, no matter who was right legally. When passing, allow for three feet between your vehicle and a cyclist, even if it means waiting a few seconds to do it safely. Share when you see sharrows, which are placed where cyclists cannot safely drive on the shoulder of the road. What are cyclists telling you? Understand the road signals used by cyclists. Left arm pointed down or right arm behind back means a cyclist is stopping. Left arm outstretched means a cyclist needs to switch to the left lane or to make a left turn. Left arm pointed up or right arm outstretched indicates cyclist is making a right turn. At a recent NOAA Hurricane Awareness Meeting, HBL Executive Director Travis Council provided another reason bicycles make sense. During and following an emergency weather event, a human-powered bicycle is most reliable. Especially if power outages persist, the internet is down and roads are blocked to motor vehicles. Everyone has the right to be safe on Hawaii's roads. This precept in Hawaiian law originated with King Kamehameha the first in seventeen ninety-seven. The law was added to the state constitution in nineteen seventy-eight. Please, Kokoa, make the right decisions. Driving with aloha means everyone has a great day. Please send your comments or questions to Walk Bike Drive Coordinator Paula Bender at paula@hawai hbl.org. Mahalo. So thank you very much for letting me share that. Um. I believe we had another pedestrian fatality today and. Um, I have, I have to say that bicyclists um, aren't getting hit so much right now. Um, I think that e-bikes and motor scooters uh, are kind of on the increase when it comes to accidents. Uh, what we want to do is to cultivate a culture of kindness, friendliness on the road between everybody who's out there. Whether you're in a vehicle, on a bike or as a pedestrian. We all should be paying attention to each other and we should all be. Uh, patient, finders in. And when you see people around you who are not um. Obeying the law, um, well, don't pick up your phone, but I, I would just suggest backing off. And um, keep, uh, keeping your distance. I see Mike Rice has a question.
Okay.
Mike?
Yes, um. Man, he's so terrible, honestly, hearing every single day, like he said, um. But hoping. That the lawmakers and governor are gonna sign the bill to ban. E-bikes from schools because these kids is, the teenagers is like irresponsible and we understand these, they're this teenager kids. But it falls on the parents.
Mm-hmm.
And, and my conscience, in my opinion, it's like, hey, if your child get hurt or killed. There should be a fine or jail time. For the parents because they're the one that are responsible buying the um, bikes. And I always say, in my opinion, well, governor or mayor, if you guys want, wanna decrease the accidents, then you have to ban. The bikes from schools. And. Only allow maybe eighteen and older and always wear helmet. But. At least, I just shake my head. Wow, I'm tired of hearing this. I have a electric scooter myself, but I'm very. Caution of riding it. Even today, I really don't ride it, honestly, after all these accidents because I don't want to. Lose my life. It's not worth it. But thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Pleasure.
Um, we are all taught when we first learn how to drive, to drive defensively. And I think that we um, are losing touch with that. Sometimes we need to get back to the basics when it comes to. Our behavior on the road, our privilege to use the roads. And for those of us who like to ride bicycles all the time. I understand um, when I see a cyclist. Dodge into a, a street to come out on the other side because there's a red light. That bothers me too. Don't worry. That bothers me too. I, I don't see how breaking the law makes your ride any better. So if we could all work together on this, that would be great. And I, I can see that we have some uh. Some of our government officers represented here on the um. Online and uh, I hope that they're listening because this is a big deal this year. Mahalo.
Mahalo for the presentation. Are there any other questions, comments or concerns from the community or board members? See none. Thank you for the informative presentation and helping us to be a better ohana sharing the roads amongst all. The ways that we travel.
My pleasure. Mahalo, everyone. Have a good evening.
Okay, next up we have a presentation from our community member William Albritton. On the concerns from his neck of the neighborhood with the proposed Makakilo Bluffs. And Kulihii Street Extension.
Aloha, everyone. Um, my name's, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name's William Albritton and I'm Makakilo, just as wonderful. I'm a Makakilo resident. Uh, I work at full-time Leirik Community College. Um. I teach cybersecurity classes and I surf. Um. I live with seven cats and two humans, so. My life is so boring and I have so much free time that I decided to take on uh, urban development. All, all getting aside, I just want to take uh, to thank my family, uh, my friends. Um, and also my neighbors and my acquaintances, some new acquaintances I've met. Uh, they gave a lot of information uh, in these slides that. I'm gonna present now. Yeah. Uh, so one thing that I, I, it was kind of uh, interesting. With the proposal for these uh. Uh, new homes uh, is fourteen point nine nine acres. So the whole uh, area above at the end of Kulihii Street and below Nemo Street on Makakilo. Uh, that we're talking about. Um, they want to develop. A small uh, neighborhood of fourteen point nine nine acres. I think that's because if it's fourteen point nine nine, if it's below fifteen. Then it goes to the county instead of the state board to look at things. And I guess that's less. Um. That's, there's less regulations with that is my guess. Uh, I was told they don't have to do. Uh, an environmental impact statement because of the size that they're talking about. So. I, I just find that a little sneaky and um, you know, it's legal, but I don't know if that's really right.
Could I, could I ask you? I think we ought to tell people where this is more carefully.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I, I just kind of jumped into it, sir. Okay, so um. If, if you go to the, in a Kulihii Street, uh, they're talking about extending Kulihii Street. Um. Perhaps all the way up to Nemo Street, uh, add thirty-seven new homes and. Sorry, is that not what you wanted me to say?
Okay. When you go up Makakilo Drive, you pass Saint Jude Church?
Okay, you only thought like that. Okay, okay, okay.
And then we come to a signal and we turn right.
Okay.
And when we return right, we're on Kulihii Street.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you turn right the Catholic church and then on Kulihii Street, when you go Makakilo Drive. And then if you drive to the end, there's a little park uh, at the bottom of the hill and you go to the, the top of the hill and that's, that's where we're at. Okay, thank you. Um. But yeah, so they're talking about converting, uh, it's eighty-four acres and they want to convert fourteen nine, nine acres into urban and um. Anyway, I, I just think uh, that's a little sneaky. There's less regulations is my understanding when they do this. Yeah. Uh, no environmental impact statement if they do just the size, ask for a change or conversion. Um, next slide please. So um. Roy Irae, so the engineering person, uh, he, he was um, kind enough to meet with everyone uh, at the end of Kulihii Street. Uh, back on August fourth. And uh, we tried to get the word out, about forty people showed up around the neighborhood. And pretty much thirty-nine were opposed. There might've been a couple of people on the fence, but uh, there was definitely one person for it and most against it. Um, the main issues we're bringing up, traffic, noise, dirt during uh. Grading, construction, uh, even ongoing noise afterwards from uh, they're talking about livestock, horses, goats, chickens. Uh, equipment, they're talking about um. What was it? The, I'll, I'll show you the next couple of slides, but there's different equipment and then also talking about different farming. Um, next, next slide please. So we had a lot of questions for Roy and he said he was to take it back to the owner Craig Cook. And then get back to us. Uh, we've emailed him several times. And he hasn't gotten back to us with these questions. We're wondering what kind of agriculture is it? What kind of workers? What kind of equipment? Uh, will be parking for a community park? Will this be gated community or not? Excuse me, a gated community or not? Uh, it's a part of a HOA or, or the current HOA or any HOA. The equipment, um, one thing on the plan was a stone crusher. Um, we're not sure what the purpose of that is. Uh, and then also a hammer mill like that grinds up stuff. Uh, we're not sure of that. Uh, so then we're suspicious, oh, are they affiliated with the quarry or not? Um, we, we would just like some answers for that. And then because the lots, it sounds like the lots. Thirty-seven lots will be sold individually. That's also, also the potential of construction ongoing. ongoing for years instead of, I think he said six months originally or, you know, less than a year. Anyway, we've emailed him several times and he hasn't come back to talk to us, sir. Uh, and by the way, Craig didn't come to the meeting at all. It was just the engineer. Uh, so we're a little disappointed that the owner didn't show up at the meeting. Uh, next one, please. Um, so there are some petroglyphs that are in the Makakilo area nearby. So that blue map, um, is Welo Street, um, before it was built. And then just to the right of it, there's a darker mark. That's the stream. And then the kind of between the quarry and that blue part is the property they're talking about, yeah. So, um, kind of our point is that they have found some petroglyphs on rocks that are about the same size as many rocks in that property. And if you make it go to the next slide, there are, I have overheard a conversation about petroglyphs on the property. I'm not gonna say who it was publicly, but I wish that person would come, our persons would come forward. Apparently towards the top of the property, I overheard a conversation that there are petroglyphs. Uh, so it would be nice if we could send uh, official folks up there and survey it a bit, yeah. Uh, I think there was a survey before, but, um, I couldn't find the document to that. I found a document that referred to that document, but not the actual document. So, and that might've been around two thousand and six, I believe. But, um, we just think a more thorough, uh, survey should be done if there's, they're talking about petroglyphs in the area. Oh, please. Um, and this is a, uh, this is from twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four, so, uh, recent articles uh, about what's called a fake farm and then a new term I didn't know about, gentleman estates. So, uh, folks buy up some farmland and they make a nice house on it. And then, you know, maybe they have a horse or a couple of chickens and then they have farmland. So, uh, it's a way to get around, uh, property taxes. So, um, and then there is, uh, I think Senator Mike Gabbard, uh, he sponsored, I don't know if the bill passed, but, uh, the legislature is concerned about this issue too, yeah. Uh, I better mosey on, we're getting low on time, yeah. So property taxes, just to give example, all that land for eighty-four acres is about one thousand, four thousand, uh, one thousand four hundred a year for taxes. And then, um, you know, seventeen dollars an acre while the neighborhood is paying like seven thousand dollars about. So that's about, um, so calculation is about forty-one thousand for urban land. So just trying to point out that it's, um, quite a bit different with agricultural land and urban land, yeah. So if you have a nice house and you're only paying one thousand four hundred a year on property taxes, that's pretty sweet, man. So. Uh, next one, please. So there's talk of vertical farming. Uh, I just want to point out that most of these businesses have gone out of business and a big problem is the high operational cost. You gotta pump in a lot of electricity and power uh, to, to grow plants. And that kind of was his thing. Uh, the owner was saying he wanted to do this, but basically it's growing plants inside a container. Uh, next one, please. Yeah, sorry, getting a little short on time. And I just want to point out a couple of things. Um, that's a conceptual plan. I think this kind of is a Frankenstein monster here because we've got the, um, proposed urban land. I think they're just selling that so they can afford to develop this place is my, my, my theory, that's my opinion. But, uh, what I have highlighted though, um, is, um, one thing i- is the residence is right there in the middle there, that yellow part. Oh, thanks so much. Uh, and then the hammer mill, um, this part is in there too. There's, uh, goats, chickens. Again, we're, you can see, uh, this is real sloopy land. I don't know why would you put ag plots on sloopy land like this. The water is gonna run off and it's not very good soil anyway because it all got eroded, yeah. Uh, according to, uh, some ag professors that I talked to. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, we think this is what the real reason, uh, is this view here is, uh, what the owner would like to do. Have a house that has this kind of view. It's really nice up there. So, you know, uh, but a couple of things I want to point out with this. Uh, one thing, um, there's two native plants up there. They're the only plants that are still green up there. It's super dry. It hasn't, hasn't rained in months. One of the native plants, uh, sorry, is, uh, Ula, let's see. Or sorry, uh, Uha Loa, Uha Loa. So it's kind of smaller plant, uh, fuzzy green leaves and small flowers. And it's used a lot, in my understanding, with Hawaiian healing. You can make tea out of it and good for, uh, your joints, um, arthritis, whatnot. And then a little hard to see, but, uh, there's a green plant there in, in the lower left corner. And that is, uh, Iliahi, uh, sandalwood. Uh, if you go to the next slide, I can show you, uh, kind of what's going on. So there's at least seventy, uh, Iliahi, Iliha, Iliahi, um, plants growing on the property. Probably seventy plus, this is clusters. So in a cluster, there can be a little cakey. But it's native. It's been here a long time. It's endemic, can't find anywhere else. Uh, we used to have the largest forest of sandalwood on the planet and now, um, uh, they're pretty rare. And, uh, sorry, I'm a little wrong, long on time. I gotta flip through this. So, um, my biologist friends who see this, they have this, they all say the same three things. One is they'd never seen this many, many Iliahi in one place. Number two is they're just amazed by the quality of them. They're ten feet tall. Um, and they told me they're really old, maybe fifty, a hundred years old because they grow really slow here. And then they were all worried that the owner's gonna go up there and get rid of them. Anyway, and they're all over the place. If you go to the next slide, um, sorry, I'm really, I'll try to flip through these a bit. Uh, so I got some cakey here, um, pretty cute, maybe five, ten years old. Um, you see everything else is, is, is brown besides the green plants, the native plants that evolved to be there. Uh, next slide, please. They have these really small flowers, um, and the bees are just loving them. Next slide, please. Uh, I was also told by a biologist that works for the state that the koala butterflies are habitat for that as well. Um, next, next slide, please. And there's a little stream down there. Um, so there might be, uh, the Hawaiian pond skater there. There might be a native there. Uh, otherwise, these are introduced. There is a caddis fly larva, which the biologist told me, uh, is a sign of, um, good water quality. So it's, it's good water quality of the creek down there. Um, and the biologist was super surprised. Uh, they did kind of informal survey, but super surprised just there's this beautiful creek in the middle of Makakilo with all this urban development. So a few more and then we'll wrap it up, yeah. These are potential, uh, natives that could be there. Uh, he didn't see that. Uh, there were other, uh, introduced ones. There were some pretty cute guppies. You want some guppies for your fish tank. And then there were some, um, Louisiana crawdads up there too. So if you're into that, uh, check them out. Okay, so this is our recommendation. Uh, there's four kinds of land districts and we repre, we recommend, uh, conservation. So there's a lot of benefits, um, environmental protection, uh, there's, uh, funding for it too. Um, there's tax breaks and, uh, you know, cultural reasons and community engagement as well. Um, well, so two more slides and then I'll wrap it up. Sorry, I went way over time, yeah. Um, so really, uh, the vision here is we could have a dryland native forest. So there's only about, depending on the website, there's only two or three percent of these, uh, forests left in Hawaii from the original forest. And then something like forty percent of native, uh, plants and animals, insects live in these kind of forests. So it would be very, uh, awesome and special if we could save this forest. Maybe if we could start putting in some other native plants, llama, willy-willy, whatnot. And sorry, fi- final slide, uh, uh, um, here. So I, I'm just asking the community, do what you can to oppose this development. And, um, all this is new to me, you know, I'm, I, I teach cybersecurity, so I don't, I'm not expert in all this stuff, but any suggestions who we should contact, ways to oppose it? I think it's at the DPP level right now. Uh, I'll put it in a chart that shows how it gets approved. But any suggestions, uh, I, I would really appreciate it. That's my email up there as well. Um, and just thank you so much for, uh, allowing me to present today. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Mahalo to our community member, William Alberton, that lives up in Makakilo on that street that pretty much gave us a view of what it currently is, which we didn't get in the last presentation. And the thing that came through very clearly is that this is probably one of the few, few pristine or close to pristine native Hawaiian dryland forests that exists in West Oahu. And that's definitely something for us to consider. Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns from board members for the presenter? Chair recognizes board member Sheila Maderas.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I learned a lot. In fact, in your right chair, um, the first presentation, a lot of the detail on just the land itself and the the native Hawaiian plants that are up there. I'm, I was excited initially, to tell you the truth, with the vertical farming. And I'm, I'm a big proponent for food security because we do live on an island. So we all need to figure that out. But I'm also, um, aware that we do need to preserve, especially this is Hawaiian History Month. And we need to do a better job of preserving some of our land and keep it in its original state. I understand development needs to happen because we do have a housing issue. But we do need infrastructure before we develop. And that's been my, my issue with these new developments. We do not have the infrastructure for the developments that are building. My uh, suggestion for you, in order to prevent this from happening, I would suggest you have to gather all of your community. It, in Kailua, they had a similar situation where there was a development that was going to be in a certain location. And it, it was gonna be a high rise, right? But the community came out in force. The people have a voice. But one, twenty people, it's not gonna make a difference when you have a massive amount of your people in your community come out and say, "Aole." There can be changes and they stop and they listen to you. But it takes more than just you and your street. Okay, but I thank you because this speaks to me, um, especially with, this is our land and we need to preserve some, some of it. Not everything needs to be developed. And we need to be more mindful of that. Thank you.
Chair recognizes First Vice Chair Michaela Lindstone.
Mahalo. Uh, just a fast question. Is there any precedence for, um, any other case where lands like these have been converted to conservation?
Yeah, I, actually, um, that didn't make the slides. Uh, so I, I was reading there's several accredited land trusts in Hawaii. The Nature Conservancy, Hawaiian Lands, Hawaiian Islands Land Trust, and the Trust for Public Land. Um, and they work with the owner and community and government entities to buy the land or work with the owner for this kind of thing. Yeah, um, I, I sent that notes, uh, actually in, I just like two hours ago and it's got a link to that as well.
Chair recognizes board member Kiala Tallo online.
Aloha. Thank you for your presentation. Very thorough, very thoughtful. Um, I nurse a rather healthy skepticism regarding all development. Um, because I think we've heard it all and you happen to be with a board who was very ma'ah to the development process. We've seen it go mostly bad and good. So I'm with you in regards of being concerned and wanting to be maka'ala about vigilant about whatever happens in the community. I have to say though, it smacks a little bit of NIMBYism because the project in which you live and which we also had, you know, you're a malahini, the wahine before who came to last me, also malahini. All the concerns that you, you bring about the project minus the vertical farming because, because your developer didn't even try to give us food security were the exact same concerns that the community at the time of your project had brought up. So it's interesting to me that the people who now benefit from that project going through despite community concerns. And we're talking longtime community members like myself are now looking over at the ridge next to them saying, well, you know, how come them? So I have to ask, like, it, would if it wasn't a private owner, right, of like a single entity, a single person owner, and if it was your developer, basically just growing your neighborhood, would you before the project? You know? Um, and if this project does go through, are you still interested in protecting what you can? So are you interested in, um, working together to get the Iliahi trees uprooted? Are you interested in learning more about vertical farming? Your, your presentation in that aspect was, was an oversimplification for sure. So I would suggest, um, when you pull your community together to do more research because it's, it's definitely more than just like growing on a barrel. And you can have lots of kanu, lots of plants on terrace land, on dry soil. You know, it's just about finding the right plant. So more research in that area. I'm interested to see if your community opposes other projects. And I'm just trying to get a tempo. Is your community just doesn't want it because it's next to you? Or because the principle of, of developing land for which we don't have infrastructure? Like board member Maderas mentioned, when we don't have food security, where we have an influx of people moving in without services to tend to them, of course, much less than the people who already live here. Um, do those principles carry through for your community? Just questions to think about because as you go up the rung, you'll, you'll continue to have to, um, deal with those. So maybe just a little more self-reflection in the community regarding thing you're protesting, you benefit from the thing you protested, but that was protested um, at the time that your community was felt. Aloha.
Mahalo. Any other board members? Member Carol England.
So I was just gonna bring that up. Tiari really brought up two or three major points that I wanted to kind of bring up, but she did. So thank you, Tiari. Again, she brought up that it was an empty, not when we moved here twenty-one years ago, it was an empty hill. And all of a sudden, all of these homes came up. And this is before I was on the board and being active. I didn't realize that there was some pushback and some concerns as well. When you, when I saw the map, I wanted to see if the owner, when it came to those natural resources of plants, have you talked to him about what Tiari mentioned, moving it, um, working together to make it feasible? Because vertical farming is what the island needs. We don't have space wide, but we can definitely grow up. Two weeks, two week old food in our stores is unacceptable. And we have always talked about food security and having somebody that has that forward thinking about vertical farming is something to be considered. So I'm just wondering if we had had that kind of conversation. I know he didn't, you told me outside that he didn't really return your, your emails, but perhaps if there is some kind of working out together, um, again, that was my thoughts.
Mahalo. Yeah, come, come on by. Sure.
So to be honest, I was a little concerned, um, about contacting him before this presentation. I was worried about the, um, Iliahi plants. I, I just, I wanted I, I just, I wanted to publicly document. All, all these native plants are up there. They're the only thing green. And you know, the, the food security, so at Laker Community College, we have agriculture program, and we're trying to grow fruit for the island, and legislators come in and talk to us and give us a bunch of money, and we're trying to scramble and, and educate as many students as we can. And you know, i- i- if the owner had came to us and said, hey, I'm gonna set up a bunch of beehives, because we have all these bees with the Ili'ahi plants up there. And then and that's be up to maybe it's close to a thousand Uhualoa plants up there, maybe use that and make some medicinal tea. You know, and then say, oh, we're, we're gonna have a little farmer's market in your street. And maybe have some other things to help feed your neighborhood. That's not the kind of things he's saying. So I don't know. Yeah, the vertical farming just, um. Yeah, I, I hear you. That's, can be a solution. And yeah, okay. And I'll find out more information. Yeah, that's, that's not a special, still doing what I can.
Awesome. Let's open up to any questions, comments, or concerns from the community members at large. Please come to the microphone if you have a question, comment, or concern. Thank you.
Actually, I'm William's wife. So when he went up to the hill multiple times, I told him, don't dig it up. You know, just sometimes not knowing is better than knowing like that. But one day I went up together. When I saw those trees, it was so beautiful. So even I didn't want to keep up. So if I didn't see it, I'm sorry for maybe, you know, even when people don't maybe care, trees like that. But yeah, really, really pretty. So I hope not only neighbors, even kind of people try to save them. And so now I'm thinking, I don't know, even though that is kind of private property, so he is the owner and even has rights. So for him, maybe, now I'm thinking, maybe I can suggest one section, two acres or something. I, I work at school, so I don't have a lot of money, but I cannot buy a whole land, but section where I kind of eventually buy that section and then save the trees. So I don't know, you guys, what you can suggest. Oh, by the way, my name is Hidin Surji. I live in.
Mahalo. And let me say, I appreciate the tone of the conversation going towards like how we can make our vision of a sustainable, resourced, and flourishing community, right? Because it's, it's not a zero-sum game where you have one or the other. It's like, because how do we make it so that it's better for us and maximizes many different parts of, that we care about as much as possible? And maybe, because if we recall from the presentation, I remember when the owner was here speaking, he shared how he's tried to do other work that were innovative at technology meeting, and he's saying he got pushback from the government, saying, can't do this and you can't do that. And my question to him was, but did you talk to the community and sell them on the vision? Because then the community can tell the decision-makers, this picture of Hawaii or our neighborhood makes sense to us. And what I'm seeing right now is that it's not clear what that picture is up in that area. So if he is able to work with community members to be able to create a, a picture of that place that makes sense and that people can buy into, then it'll be much easier to get our decision-makers on the same page, you know? And if it's not what you want, I believe in freedom of speech and advocacy to go and protest. Yeah, no problem. Okay, any other community members? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Ronnie Munikata, and you already know me a couple of times. I live up on Makakilo and above Maokalani Elementary School. We moved here in 1988, when we had beautiful open skies and stars. This was before they built most of the houses down below. Well, I was raised in Kailua. I can't afford to live there anymore. But the house still exists. And when we built the house, my father built the house, the surrounding area was part of the Kawainui Swamp. It was just at the end. And across from it was a creek with forty-foot, fifty-feet hardwood trees. My parents were working parents. So they didn't know what my little brothers were doing. They were going up into these big hardwood trees and building forty-foot treehouses. I wasn't allowed to join because I was a girl. And I would look up and see forty-foot treehouses with little boys all screaming and hanging and trying to come down the ropes. Well, it's no longer there. Those trees have been totally level. It's called Kailua bluffs, and it's along Kiolo Drive. It has been plowed up, and there's houses clear up to the freeway that goes to Waianalo from Castle Junction. Now, I remember those trees beautifully. I remember the wood being cut down. I remember the saws. And it does not look the same. By the way, the marsh is not happy either. And neither is the little brook that we used to be able to go across the little bridge. And when there are days of heavy rain, and Kailua does have heavy rain, it floods. So they have totally destroyed their ecosystem. And now it's full of malathion, fertilizers, which now flows into Kailua Bay. So when you say this is going to ruin the land, you're talking about decimating probably a patch of land and possibly the butterflies that will no longer exist and probably only exist in a few spots in this world. Now, yes, food's important. But at the same time, so are these animals and so is this land. We're not going to recover it, just like Kailua is not going to recover those trees and their swamp. So I would like you to think carefully. And vertical farming is a lovely idea. But at the same time, it takes a lot of energy, a lot of know-how, and it does take land. So let's discuss this clearly and with an open mind, but also open eyes.
Mahalo, Auntie, for your wisdom. Okay. Let's go online to Thad's break. Question, comments, or concerns?
Yes, hi, thank you. I just wanted to renew, restate, you know, my position, same as last time. I want to see the Makakilo Drive extension put in before we see any new development up in Makakilo. It's just real simple. Thank you.
Mahalo, Thad, for bringing that up. And also, it's not just Thad's position, but it's the neighborhood board's position that we call for a development moratorium until they address certain issues, including the completion of Makakilo Drive. Sometimes we call it the extension because that's the language that the people that never finished the job use. But it was promised to be completed and not quite there yet. Okay, come on down.
Hi, my name is Leslie Keating. I'm a resident. Thank you for bringing up the moratorium. I was gonna mention whether or not that's something we've already firmly stated. But I also wanted to mention that more than anything, I have a problem with the subdivision of this into what seems like thirty-seven units, which we know is gonna be above the price range for most working families in this area. And so we're looking at people coming buying these houses, I don't know, as second vacation houses, because that many acres divided by thirty-seven plus one little bit larger place is, those are large lots. And we really need to be focusing on the people that are living here now, the people that are working here now, and what they're able to afford. And truthfully, that is high-density housing. And we need to use what we are gonna develop in this area, as we are supposed to be a second city, for high-density housing and not, and stop allowing these single-family homes to be built anywhere. Because really, the infrastructure that it takes for each of these houses to have water, power, and everything else is much more than when you build a large building. And I know not everybody wants to live in one, but for the sake of this island and for what we have left for farmable land, I, I just can't see why we're even thinking about building more single-family housing. And now if it wants to be used as a farm in the future, that's another question, and I don't have any problem with talking about this development. That's my big issue.
Mahalo, thank you. Any other community members wish to speak on, or ask questions, or comment on the presentation? Seeing none, going back to the board and member Carol England.
So if you remembered during the presentation, he said, he first said all he wanted to do was farmland, but it was the Department of, yeah, DPP, said that that wasn't going to be, that wasn't acceptable. So he had to break it down, but his real, true passion is vertical farming. The homes that, that were brought up at thirty-seven acres or thirty-seven homes, it's because he, he just wanted to get his farming done. And so he had to compromise with the, is that a city and county or is that a state department? DPP, city. So he had to compromise with the city and county. So I get it, but because you mentioned about the high density, he didn't want to build houses. So I'm just wanting to kind of bring that back to the forefront.
So as member Carol England reminded us of what was presented by the landowner, that's where we also shared with him that if you want to do all farming, help the community understand their vision so we can then come alongside you and influence our decision-makers so that we could do farming. But now I'm hearing maybe farming and potentially conservation for really, really trees and certain other Uhualoa. I was like, that's probably closer to the vision of what the landowner was telling us it was, rather than building houses, like which the city said he had to. Okay, so again, let's be neighborly and see if we can work on things together. And when we're at the point where we disagree, let's disagree amicably and advocate for our position. But until then, let's work together because we're gonna be living next to each other for quite a bit. Okay, now let's go online. I think there is M Sun is the name online. If you could introduce yourself and say your question, comment, or concern with the presentation.
Hello, so I'm also a resident in Makakilo as well. And I just had a simple question, like regarding, you know, this whole project to the food insecurity and things like that, especially with vertical farming. And I wasn't really exactly sure how that would be exactly very significant, especially in a secluded area within the Makakilo, when the food insecurity is the greatest in the Waianae side and not in Kapole. So I'm not really sure about the exact ways that the props and things like that, that he will be farming in his vertical farmland, how that would exactly be impacting Hawaii's food resources to, you know, benefit the community when, especially in Kapole, it's doing pretty good, especially with this source that is talking about the Food Insecurity Index. You can zoom in on the, you know, like, in each of the islands within Hawaii as well, how it is. So I was just wondering like how this would exactly get imported and things like that, especially when it's just a private property and a private farm to help the community, like if you know what I'm saying.
Okay, so well, I'll take a shot at that because again, we're all speculating here about the landowner. But from what I recall from his presentation is that he's a kind of an ag innovator person that's worked in the industry for a while. And he's trying to showcase proof of concept, it's called, to be able to show how you can have vertical farming integrated into urban landscapes or in communities, then it's viable. It's something that's possible and that's sustainable, is what I recall. Now, when you talk about food insecurity, there's two different, I think, concepts going on. The first is there's food insecurity for the whole state because we import over eighty-plus percent of all of our food from elsewhere. And the second is, as you was pointing out, there's food insecurity per household. And different homes and families, particularly on the west side in Waianae, have a statistically higher level of them not having enough appropriate nutrition in their daily diet. So those two different things, like one is making sure that every neighborhood and every household get appropriate amounts of food. And two is to make sure that us as the entire island chain is able to produce that for our neighbors. Because we can solve the second food insecurity by addressing other things, including making sure that we get more produce and, and and resources to those that are food insecure, you know, like SNAP benefits. But the second is, we have to grow our own here at home, which I believe what the landowner was articulating. From his experience, he's, he's retired. He's like, I just want to show that we can do this because we keep building, we keep building suburbia, like saying that somewhere else is gonna bring in the food. But he's like, we can do the food right, right in our neighborhoods. That, that was what I got from his presentation. Again, I could be misrepresenting him, but I think that, that that's what I've heard. And as a good neighbor, I would give them the benefit of the doubt until proven otherwise, right? Okay, now we're going to Johnny Mae Perry online.
Thank you, Chair. This is Johnny Mae Perry. The presenter said, gentlemen home, what that is, is mansions. Okay, is there access to their property, water access to their property? Does the owner have a wildfire plan? That will increase everybody's real estate property tax. Then many of those home may be a empty home. Vertical farming, why would you want to do it on prime real estate when you should do it on lower? And it, you know, it's a gimmick. They buy ag land because they know it's cheaper. Then they go for a rezoning to build homes. And that's where eventually they make their money. I'm not sure if the board wanna take a position in support or opposition of this, this project. Also, in food insecurity, that everybody in Hawaii is faced with that, not only Waianae. So we're, we're at the brink with these tariffs. You may be aware of when you go shopping, you're buying less because everything is more. And instead of they selling by pound, they're selling by pieces. So I, I don't believe the, the objective of vertical farming, that's just a a sales pitch. But the real intention is, has not been revealed to the community. And oftentimes, that happens time and time again. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Mahalo, community member Johnny Perry. And that's the reality of our community. The board member Tiara has shared that, which is we get developers that come in and promise us the sky, the moons, the stars, and, and rainbows, and then we get left picking up pieces afterwards. So I think it's good for us to be open-eyed, as Auntie said earlier, who's like, to be open-minded and but also to keep our eyes open and watch. Just like we asked the landowner, he said, DPP said couldn't. Would be good if he came back and showed us the letter where DPP said that he couldn't to, again, gain some credibility and build trust, not because of him personally, but because we've seen this dog and pony show before, where people come in and then exactly what Johnny Perry says, they take land, ag land, and then they get it rezoned in order to then sell off. Like, if he's someone that the community can work with, great. If he's someone that the community needs to oppose, great. Better we know. If he's someone that the community needs to oppose, great, better we know, right? And be upfront and see and keep it out in the open. So until then, let's keep the benefit of the doubt for our neighbors and invite them to the conversation and then we move forward, ala moa. And at this time, I don't think the neighborhood board is taking a position on this because it's in the very preliminary stages and we, the only position the board has taken already is that all new development, we do not support until completion of Makakilo Drive. And second is that they have to have a wildfire mitigation plan, like you gotta have them planned. And third is underground the, the utilities. Okay, going back to Tiara.
Pretty fast. I just want to mahalo and commend this community for coming together, putting together this incredible presentation for uniting in this matter. We love the energy, we love the participation. As I said before, this particular board, we are ma'atau this side, we're all, you know, pe'una to this side of the moku, so we very deeply understand the concerns that are being voiced here and we've done the work. And so my kahe'a, my, my call to you is to continue to be involved in the work. There are many other development projects. Their whole team's still got six thousand more homes to go. We got the Savio property just up the way, Kuni'a homelands, a lot of gentleman farms, legitimate, people are not abiding by the covenants there. We have another, you know, four hundred home, we got twelve thousand more coming up in Kailua. So all of these concerns regarding infrastructure, food security, like take that same energy and go or, and, and, and build, yeah, your concern for your immediate aina is wonderful, but we all share aina. So I would say continue to be engaged. The issues that you face are not isolated to you. They're, they're all, like, we're all involved, we're on the same va'ua. So please continue to show up for not just your particular kaya'ulu, not your particular community, but for the wider Kapolei, Makakilo, Hona Kaihala area, who is constantly under fire in terms of people wanting to extract from us. And we have to pulama, we have to preserve, protect too, yeah. So trying to find that balance, but mahalo for coming to us to kuka kuka and discuss with us.
Eo, mahalo, board member Tiara, tala for sharing that kahe'a, that this is not a unique struggle in Hawaii or West Oahu. So please don't burn out, please. Please take care of yourself and continue to work with each other and uplift each other as we try to make this a better place for those that will come and inherit it from us. Okay, now let's go back. I think last comment or it's from M-Sun, they have their hand up again. Go right ahead.
Oh, hi, sorry. I want to ask another question regarding, you know, this infrastructure where, you know, like it's up in the hills and it's a really rocky area. So I feel like I haven't heard about plans regarding, you know, possible stormwater and possible like, you know, those wastewater, you know, flowing down from up the hill since the owner wants to have some animals over there. Yeah, again, as Johnny May Perry has said, the utilities and things like that, I feel like they're not very thoroughly addressed for the residents that were already, you know, living there before this construction that hasn't started yet. To be, you know, dealing with the aftermath, yeah, thank you.
Okay, mahalo for raising up another concern from today's presenter, William Alberton. Like he showcased and focused a lot of that about the flora and fauna, about the native species and potentially things that have to be protected under law. And he raised earlier that the, the need for an environmental assessment at the least, let alone environmental impact statement. So the things that you're raising up, like that, that should be covered in an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, like how does this look with stormwater when you bringing all of this different types of usages on the property is like, so they should be able to address that. So that is something definitely I think the community should consider pushing for is asking the homeowner to do an EA, even if it's not required, to build again goodwill, neighborly, aloha. Please consider doing an environmental assessment and helping the community to put out their concerns and then you can try and address the concerns and then see how we can move forward. To see if we're on the same team and the same va'ua or you stay swimming on the, in the water and we stay actually in the va'ua alone, so. Okay, final words from Tiara Tala.
Yes, final, final, to save the community some time, just for this recording, it'll be available publicly to the landowner. Let them go to the timestamp, I don't know what it is, and just let them pour through everything. You can put it through transcription, AI services, print it out for him so that he is aware and you can itemize your concerns from not just the community, from the board and other members, not in that direct housing area. And, and then go from there. Good energy.
Mahalo, so that's a really good recommendation. Again, as we started, this is our community forum where we talk and we discuss, like not just, and where we sometimes change our minds, you know? We learn and we grow. And thanks to the neighborhood commission office, they have created new technology that they're utilizing. So we have different types of minutes that might be a bit more descriptive, so we can forward that as well, along with the videos, so they can read it in the transcript. Okay, so now we head into the public input section.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I recognize second vice chair, Dr. Kiony Dudley.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we put something else into the presentations. I asked you to put in the resolutions and the calls to action that we want to consider at our next meeting and to let me talk about that next meeting. And none of that is on the agenda. And I would like to make a motion that we talk about that now and that we take a vote on these resolutions and calls to action.
Okay, so.
Is there a second?
Okay, so the chair hears the request of the second vice chair about a potential special joint meeting on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five with, we should consider resolutions and calls to action. And my recommendation is that we add that to board business as item H, as a special joint meeting for October twenties to twenty-twenty-five, so that we can then have discussion about that and the items and see what we can move forward on without running afoul of the sunshine law.
A motion.
I hear a motion, but there's been a motion, but no second for Dr. Kiony Dudley's. I need the recommendation, so we will dispense.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I, I'm not really following what's going on. Are, are you saying yes to my request? Is that what your, the motion is about?
So the motion would be to add board business item special joint meeting for October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five as item G under board business. Under that topic, we can then discuss the items that you talked about and see whether or not, and what we can do without running afoul of the sunshine law.
Okay, I, I second that.
Okay, great. Public input on this. Is anyone testifying? So we, we're procedurally, so everybody's on the same page, we're voting to vote. We're voting to, to put on an agenda item at this time by two-thirds majority. And then if that passes, we're then saying that we can then discuss it on the agenda. And then we could vote on the items that was listed. Okay, is there anyone wishing to testify on this? Is there any board discussion on this? Seeing none, is there any objection to adding board business eight H special joint meeting for October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five? Hearing no objection, the chair calls it unanimous and we are adding that topic there. And then the items that Dr. Dudley requested, we will try to address them at that time. Now let's go to public input and invite community members up to share. And you have up to three minutes. Come on down.
Hi, my name is John Yoshimura and I represent a company called Plus Power. It's really hard to believe that it was six years ago that I came to you to share with you our hope and plan to build a battery storage system for Hawaiian Electric. I came, we made a presentation, Dr. Dudley came down and took a look at our site. You folks put it on your agenda and, and you voted to support our project. Thank you very much. And this is what you folks helped create. Let me tell you a little bit about the battery. And actually, the reason why I'm here tonight is to tell you that we're interested in building another battery project in your district. Hawaiian Electric is going to go out for another RFP. It's already been delayed months, if not a year, because of stuff that happened in Lahaina, et cetera. There was a whole bunch of things that took precedence over Hawaiian Electric's renewable energy RFPs. So the next RFP supposedly is going to have a request for additional battery storage. Now what this battery does, okay, and I'd be happy to take anybody out there to show it to them, because we're really proud of this project. It's, it's very secure, it's very safe, it's constantly monitored, we have cameras, we have all kinds of different monitoring devices, so we know exactly what's going on there twenty-four hours a day. What this battery does is, you know, a lot of us have solar on our homes and a lot of us have solar only, not battery. So whatever solar we don't use during the day goes into the grid. Now, did you know that Hawaiian Electric is unable to use a lot of the solar that goes into the grid, the solar that we don't use? And that is a true, that is very, that's terrible. You know, you're, you're, you're losing energy, you're losing money. So what this battery does is it is connected to the grid, it's not connected to any kind of renewable energy, okay? So when there is an excess of power on the grid, this battery will store so it can be used for other times. And this has saved Hawaiian Electric a lot of money in that they are now able to capture a lot of the energy that was produced by these solar panels that wasn't being used, that basically had to just go to waste. The other thing that this battery does, and it's, it's even more important than just storing the excess solar, this battery is constantly, it's, it's a hundred eighty-five megawatts, one hundred and fifty megawatts are for storage only. Thirty-five megawatts is what we call fast frequency response. And what this battery does is twenty-four hours a day, it either discharges or absorbs energy from the grid. Because your grid to be stable so that we don't have blackouts or other kind of problems, it has to run at a certain, certain frequency. And as you all know, renewable energy, wind, battery, wind and solar, you know, it goes up and down. It rains, the wind, the, the rain, the wind stops, the sun, you know, clouds cover the sun. So that renewable energy has the potential to make the grid unstable. But what this battery does is within milliseconds, it's able to either add power to the grid or take excess power away to keep the frequency stable. So thank you so much. Really found that, you know, the neighborhood board asked a lot of great questions, had a lot of great interest in it. As I mentioned, Dr. Dudley came out to take, take a look at the site because he had concerns about the site. And, you know, your chairman came and, and joined us during our, our blessing and dedication. So I, I'm just here to reintroduce myself, to mention that I'll hopefully be seeing you in the next couple of months and perhaps make a presentation where we'll have drawings and plans and all kinds of other stuff. Thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mahalo, understanding that they're going to come back for a future presentation about a potential project, are there any questions, comments or concerns? Chair recognizes Dr. Dudley.
It wouldn't be a meeting unless I got a question from.
Yes, sir. So good to see you again, John.
Good to see you.
John, a, a lot of our concern tonight is going to be about hurricanes and the tsunamis and the additional water surge that comes with hurricanes. I just want to say that, you know, we made sure that this, this one was fifty feet or more above sea level and want to remind you about the need to get things up high.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, we now are expecting hurricanes that are going to reach two hundred mile an hour. These are going to have to be fastened down in order to hold with two hundred mile an hour winds.
I don't know how much these batteries weigh, but believe me, no hurricane ever is going to lift one of these batteries. They're like, I, I, I mean, like, you know, I, I actually should know, but it's, it's, each battery, and we've got a hundred fifty-eight of them over there, they're like a hundred tons apiece. So they're super, super heavy and you should have seen the heavy equipment that they had to bring in to place these batteries, you know, on, on the concrete slabs with such accuracy. It's just amazing what unionized workers can do.
Any other questions, comments or concerns for the presenter? Mahalo, thank you for reintroducing yourself. Thank you for a successful project and thank you for coming to talk story with us before you actually come talk story with us. Now let's invite up anyone else, public input, come on down.
Hello, my name is Manuel. I'm one of the event organizers for the bubble run. Thank you to the board for allowing me to make the announcement today and also thank you to the community for showing up. This is our first time doing the bubble run again after COVID here in Kapolei. The bubble run is going to take place Saturday, October eleventh, from six AM to twelve PM. The start and the finish line is going to be located on Lexington Street near the Five Star Warehouse. And the following streets will be affected, Lexington Street, Midway, Boxer Road, Hornet Street, Saratoga Avenue and Tulagi Avenue. And then we'll keep one lane open during the race for vehicle traffic. The only spot where we're going to close both lanes is going to be between Lexington, Lexington Street and Yorktown Street and Shangri-La Street. That's the only section where we kind of close both lanes because that's the start and finish line area. Critical intersections will be monitored by HPD and our staff and our volunteers will oversee the run course and parking. We do expect some traffic delays there between seven AM and eleven AM. The last wave of runners is expected to leave at ten thirty AM and then we're going to be power around maybe twelve thirty and our cleanup crew is going to be out of there by like one PM-ish. If you have any questions or concerns, I'm going to leave some of these flyers on the desk. There's a QR code on there that you can scan for the course map. But yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak and that's basically it. Thank you.
Mahalo, any questions for our presenter? Go right ahead, community, board member Sheila Maderas.
I'm really disappointed I won't be able to do this because I'm, thank you for this information because we're having our one-year anniversary for our food bank. because we're having our one-year anniversary for our food bank drive that's going to happen the same time at Kapole High School. So I know now to inform our residents to avoid this area. But thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, man, I'm really sad. I'm not going to be able to participate, but good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And everyone interested in the Family Fun Event with Doubles, go and check out the QR code. Anyone else for public input? Thad Sprague, online.
Chair, you said to remind you about my committee assignments.
Thank you, Thad. So Thad has reached out to volunteer to be on not just the beautification committee, but all the committees. So we will, the chair will ask the board to add to the agenda as item 8I. Thad Sprague on all committees. This is a community member wishing to volunteer on our committees and we have to place him on it. So is there any public input for the vote? Testimony? Hearing none? Is there any objection from the board voting to put it on so we can discuss Thad volunteering some more? Hearing none, okay. Chair calls it unanimous. We're having it as 8I, so Thad can volunteer on all committees. New public input, come on down.
Aloha, my name's Letizia Hernandez. I am a resident of the villages of Kapole for the last 18 years. I'm here with my partner Bernie Flores, who is the homeowner of the villages of Kapole for the last almost 33 years. And I'm just coming here to bring awareness basically to what's going on in our community, our little sub-community. We are, I guess, basically going under like a new management with our association office as early as of January, February of this year. And some concerns that I just wanted to bring up because I saw your guys' last meeting online. You guys have a beautification stuff. And I know there's a lot of surrounding areas in the villages of Kapole that do need attention that currently is owned by HHFDC. On our board right now, there's currently an HHFDC representative who is now a villages of Kapole board member. So I think that kind of blurs the lines a little bit as far as who's assuming the responsibilities of what area, right? And as a member of the association, it becomes a great concern because we do have a 2030 projection of the annexation of the HHFDC handing everything over to the villages of Kapole, right? And I don't think that they, we clearly have a picture of what that looks like because there's a lot of areas surrounding that are in complete disrespect. You know what I mean? It's just awful godly looking. So I'm concerned because if we as the association is going to assume that, it's going to come at a heavy cost, right? And those costs will then be passed on to us as homeowners. And I just feel that the contract should have been upheld where we assume it in a maintenance stage, not a restoration stage, repair stage, all of that. Because that comes with a huge cost, right? All of that. And I just want to thank you guys first and foremost by allowing us to have this time as community to speak out. Because within our own homeowners association, we do have monthly meetings, but we are prohibited to speak unless we are asked to speak, right? And that never does happen. That's my number one concern. My second concern as, you know, a resident is with all these changes, there isn't clear transparency, right? And that's what we're lacking right now. And it's come to a point where as an individual homeowner, we had to seek legal counsel because I go to the Hawaii Real Estate Commission. Again, we are a 421 planned community. They only preside over 514 condominiums. I've also reached out to OCP, again, an investigator called and said the same thing. Basically, go and hire your own legal counsel to get all of this. Since January to now, we haven't had a financial statement. And that's very concerning because if we're talking in terms of our day-to-day operations, what we're assuming and what we're, you know, expecting to absorb costs coming next year, those are our huge concerns. And I just wanted to bring it up to your guys, is, you know, put it on your radar because we are a planned community of roughly 4,000 plus members, right? And just the other week, I sat in our driveway with my partner in our little cul-de-sac. We are a cul-de-sac of 19 homes. Of those 19 homes, 13 are original homeowners. So it just goes to show you that these, our intentions were for this to be our forever home, right? To pass it on. It's not like we decided to just pop up with the up-and-coming second city, right? No, we were part of welcoming all the surrounding areas. And I just wanted to, you know, thank you guys for allowing me to have this time to speak, to feel like our voices are being heard. I'm only one homeowner. There are several other people. However, they don't have the financials to hire lawyers because basically that's two months I've been going on asking for documentations, whether it be protocols and procedures, standard operating procedures. I've gotten two meeting minutes. And that's disheartening because then, like you mentioned earlier, how do we build the trust? How do we build the communication, the relationship? It's broken when it's met with silence, right? You know, I go back oftentimes and I recall community politicians when they're out there giving their campaigns and their slogans. You see something, you say something. Okay, so now I saw something, I said something, and I feel like I'm trying to be silenced, right? So I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on in the surrounding areas. Thank you, Mahalo for your time.
Mahalo. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns for the presenter? The only manao I have to share is that on, as part of our liaison from the governor's office is we have Mr. Gordon Pang, who is a part of HHFDC. So if there are anything that we can assist with, with coordinating with HHFDC side, we'd be more than happy to try and engage with that. So what I'm talking about is the relationship we have, right? Which is different than what you tried, right? So I understand you're going lawyer or whatnot, but we get relationships, so we can try. And then we can see how, because part of it also is we will get it to on our own agenda is the Office of Information Practice, even if HHFDC no like, give them to you, they got it. So I'm like, we can be nice about it, or we can go and we can get other government involved to help you to provide the documentation. Again, for documentation requests. And I'm not speaking on the situation because we're not sure, but we can help with getting pola pola, like if you need assistance. Yeah. Okay, come on down.
My name is Susan Trombley, and I live in Pico Gardens, which is a sub-association of villages of Kapole. I also have concerns about what's been going on in our small community. I feel that I have less rights in the community association than I have under my condo association. My condo board listens to homeowners. The community association restricts community input. We have not been allowed to speak since COVID started and everything went on Zoom. And sometimes, community members have solutions to concerns that the community has. And for the board not to want to listen to homeowners breaks my heart. Since January, the entire staff, oh, wait a minute, there's three people left. The entire staff except for three people in that office have been fired or have resigned or retired. When you go into the office, no one knows who you are. No one knows what's going on. They say, I'll get back to you. And that really truly doesn't happen, does it? We have asked for statements for minutes of meetings. We have asked to look at the most current election results documents. We were told that we had to have a notarized statement. I know other homeowners have asked for these documents in the past and have not had to pay a notary to have access to that information. I have my driver's license. I have my villages of Kapole membership card with my picture on it, my name and my address. They know who I am. They can verify who I am. But for me, for them to discriminate against me now when I know other homeowners have not had to pay that financial cost is, I just feel discriminated against. There have been no financial statements since January because of the people that have quit or the people that have left. They've had new people in. They had, used to have one accountant. They now have three accountants and a clerk. And now they've just, this couple, what was last week, they hired another temporary accountant. And even the new general manager that came on in May, you can't reconcile from what the money that came in in May and the money that you spent out, the money that came in in June and the money that you put out, the money that came in in July. What about August? And there's, you know, well, we're working on it. We're working on it. And every single month I attend these meetings. And every single month we're told, we're going to have the statement for you next month. We're going to have the financials for you next month. And last week, when we had the meeting, they said that they're working on the budget for next year. One of the board members did say, how can you work on a budget when we don't know where we're at? And the general manager was very insistent that this board member didn't know what she was talking about because those are two different issues. And I'm concerned, as I know other homeowners are concerned about, how can you raise my dues when you don't have an accounting of where the money that has come in, where it has gone? They took a special assessment for some shared driveways for the last three years. The money, the three, oops, I'm sorry, the three years was up last December. They had projected that if you paid this money for three years, I think it was like $63 a month in addition, then your driveways would be fixed. They should have had a project manager hired last fall. They should have had bids come in and nothing has been done. These people have paid their money and nothing has been done. Again, I don't know how much you can help us, but I just want you to know that some of us are at our wits' end because this is not the community that we thought we were part of. So thank you for listening.
Mahalo. Thank you again for raising the concerns. The other manao I have regarding the situation you're facing is to engage with your immediate condo association board of directors and then ask them on the record to then officially send your requests. The more condominium associations that send their requests to the master association, the more you have the paper trail by which you're making the requests. And like, again, we're just trying to, what I'm hearing is that there's just a desire to have transparency and openness about the information. So part of doing that is to engage with all of the different members of the organization, the family, including your condo association. So they can be like, on this date, we send a letter to this, this. It will help encourage people to be open about what's going on. Okay, public input, come on down.
Hi, my name is Leslie Keating. I'm here now representing the Kapole High School Marching Band. And we are having our annual marching band festival, October 25th, at 6:00 PM. So it'll be at night this time. Everybody can come down and enjoy themselves in the pool evenings. It's always more fun that way. And anyways, we are, I also wanted to put out there, it's still not 100% confirmed, but the district has said yes to us. And we're working on getting enough commitments from parents. But our school is going to be the only marching band, high school marching band represented at the Fourth of July Parade in Washington DC next year. And so we are especially looking to raise a ton of money because it's not free. We all have to pitch in to get our children there. So this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, but we will be coming to everyone. I'm sure your friends and neighbors that have kids in marching band will also come to you for fundraisers that we plan to have later this year. But my last thing is, again, and this is October 25th, it's our biggest fundraiser. I did make invitations for the board, but then I realized I made them myself. I didn't put the inserts in all of them. So I am going to just give the three here in Nikiala and Paris. I will, I had meant to also send a digital copy to you to get to the board members who weren't present today. But since I have these physical cards, I'm going to give them to you. We are looking for our neighborhood leaders and VIP guests that we wanted to invite you to this marching band festival. It's tons of them.
Mahalo. Anyone wanting to donate to the marching band at this time? It's a great way to ask. It would have been perfect if she just held up the QR code to the camera. Okay. Any other community members? If not, then let's go to elected officials, starting with the mayor's office or council member's office. Come on down, yeah.
Aloha. Good evening there, Chair and the neighborhood board. I really appreciate you all for letting me speak today. Just a few things that for us to report. It was sent to you that we wanted to give you a heads up for you to look into Resolution 25204, something to look into because great information and referencing relating to transferring of funds. And that was from Chair Tommy Waters' office. We wanted to also inform that our office actually had two resolutions that have passed. We're super excited. It's the Resolution 25109 for the court audit, along with Resolution 2522 for the police chief requirements. So that's a good win for our side. We also just want to give another reminder that this upcoming October, we do have the Price into Paradise event that's being held at the Blaze Dell. So for more of those who are first-time homebuyers looking to get research upon of what you can do on purchasing homes, Andrew is also doing a job fair too. So it's went from 1.0 to 2.5. So we're trying to maximize those that have the opportunity to go about sort of educating yourself on how to purchase a home and also with your finances. All right, but other than that, I do not have anything else to report. I am open up for questions, concerns. What can I help you with?
What she said. Okay, first vice chair, Michaela Lenzo.
Mahalo. I've been talking with Councilmember Tupola on this. We have a loose dog problem on the west side. Yeah, if we could, I mean, I really think that the humane society just doesn't have the capacity. You really need like a mercenary task force out there who really know how to trap animals, like hunters. And, you know, on the west side, we have so many of those. You can hire them out, pay them by animal that they trap. We have so many loose dogs. I'm so worried, not just for our, you know, our keiki and those who, you know, you get chased by these dogs, but also for people that have other animals and they're being attacked, like goats and rabbits and cats and chickens. It's just getting out of hand.
Yes, I appreciate that concern, Vice Chair. So our office is looking into it. I am part of that email. So we want to try and see, go ahead and to generate some sort of task form. We want to reach out to the areas that do. And I understand for humane society, I know they have a lot to do on their end, but we're going to go ahead and reach out and see how we can be able to assist in this situation. You won't go?
Mahalo. Appreciate that. We have to protect our community members of all types, human and otherwise, from the rogue, rogue dogs that are wild, going all around.
Yes, it's unfortunate.
I'm glad the chickens don't do that. Okay, two member, Sheila Maderas.
Hello. I just, I noticed.
I just, I noticed near here in that open area, it looks like it's a growing houseless encampment. Like, it was just, like, almost like it within a couple of days. It's just, yeah, it's, there's a lot. So I'm, I'm excited to participate tomorrow with Andrea with the R3. Is that the community that we are servicing? And what is the plan for these houseless communities that continue to just, you know, it seems like they're just shifting in different spots.
Understandable. Thank you for the question and concerns. So right now at the Dream House, we are running that, or that in particular program, which is the R3 Restore, Revive and Reconnect. So with this, we are going out and engaging because this in particular program provides more providers in one hub. So it's easy for them to come, those who are unfortunate, who are the homeless and looking to see what they need in order to get them off of that situation. Maybe documentation, may it be employment, may it be shelter, may it be a simple bus pass to get what they need to do to move forward, to not be in that situation. But we do have our program every Wednesdays and Thursdays. So it is unfortunate because it does show that they migrate, you know? So it's like, they stay one spot, they get sighted, they pick up, they're gone, and then they're in another spot. It's very unfortunate how the homeless is at this time. So we try to go about and see, what do you need from us? What do you need in order for you to not be in that situation? So it's a whole lot of engaging, a whole lot of opportunity to provide. But we do know that with this, with our homeless, there is the unfortunate part of mental assistance, substance abuse assistance, you know? Those who are in those areas. So we try to have as much providers who can help us to navigate in that end. And we are more than open for the community to be there to help us to engage and help to give and help to see how we can navigate them to the next step in their journey.
Mahalo. Okay, board member, Carol England.
Yes, so I'm really excited about tomorrow because I do have the radical holiday. We do outreach. So we'll learn tomorrow when we go out and engaging with these individuals. And it's really that point, that, that initial contact, because you're already there at the Dream House with all your resources. You just need to have them get to you. And so tomorrow, when we go out there, and it's all volunteer. So if anybody has a passion to reaching out to the houseless, we're going to be there from five to six. Sheila's going to be there and I have four more other volunteers. And then from there, hopefully we can build rapport. And that's really what it takes is they have to trust you. I mean, they've been under the streets, I don't know how long. And you just become a little more suspicious of people, right? And so, yeah, it's just, they build up barriers, just like anybody else would. So we'll see, you know, the engagement part. Because if they trust and they follow us to Dream House, then just looking at your resources, I'm sure they'll be able to take it to the next level.
Yes. Thank you so much for that. So everyone must understand with this program, we provide to where those who are looking for assistance, it's for their accountability. We tell them, you need to show up in order for you to get these services. We, yes, we'll come out and we'll engage with you, but your responsibility is to come. And we'll help you to document. But if you're not coming, there's no way how we can help you. Thank you so much.
Mahalo for the good work and thank you for being neighbors to our neighbors that don't have houses. They're still our neighbors.
Yes, they are.
Any other questions, comments or concerns for Councilmember Andrea Tupola's office?
Oh yeah, once again, I'm Jeannie. Sorry. I didn't even introduce myself. From Councilmember Andrea Tupola's.
Hearing none. Thank you so much. Continue the good work. Appreciate it.
Aloha.
Let's now go to the congressional's. Anyone online? Okay, above the governor's office, Uncle Gordon online by chance. Welcome, Uncle Gordon. We was just talking about you earlier.
I'm here.
Aloha.
Can you see me?
Yes, we see you with your wonderful baseball cap.
See you. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chairs, fellow West Oahu residents. I'm Gordon Pang, Housing Information Officer for the Hawaii Finance and Development Corporation. And also your liaison for any concerns you'd like to raise to the Governor Josh Green. First, I need to apologize for missing last month's meeting. I got seriously ill and just could not participate in any of your, any part of your meeting. And, but I'm back and I will try my best to assist here. I honestly don't have a report for you this evening, although I would like to address the residents of the Villages of Kapole. You know, as, as you folks correctly stated, we continue with the very slow process of, of transferring the public property to the county of Honolulu. We promised to give, accept those properties. One of the concerns that one, one of you folks raised regarding the state of the properties is one of the issues involved. You know, who's to pay for different things? The state has, has, has offered to pay for a bunch of things. I think the city would prefer that we pay more. So there's a little bit of politicking taking place there. All that said, you know, some of the issues you folks raised are concerning. And I urge you to put them in writing and email them to me at gordon.pang@hawaii.gov. G-O-R-D-O-N dot P-A-N-G at hawaii.gov. I also wanted to point out that we are also taking part, HHFTC, the Housing Finance Agency, is also taking part in Councilmember Tupola's Price into Paradise gathering later in October. I think our focus will be on first time home buyers and what types of programs might be available for them as they make that journey into homeownership. And finally, I just wanted to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't, to please look at the governor's clean newsletter. I will send the, a link to the latest copy. Shoot, where is it? Oh, here it is. I will send the link to the latest copy in the chat. My email address is also there. So I think that's the all of it. Any questions for me?
Thank you. No questions. Mostly, oh. Recognizing that we are at 9:19, so you have questions, we'll come back to you. Dr. Belli, Gordon.
Okay, Gordon, I just wanted to say that we are having this meeting on October 22nd. It's going to be televised. We're going to have it on WebEx also. We'd really like to have the governor watch it because, you know, the message about shelters and the money that is needed for fortifying homes. The governor has to give his approval to that. And, you know, the more he knows how great a problem this is, the better it's going to be. Thank you.
Mahalo. Any other questions, comments or concerns for the office of the governor at this time? Recognizing we can email them directly to him. Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much. Now let's go to the now let's go to the legislature. Anyone from the Senate?
Yes.
Okay, Representative Gabbard. Okay, Gordon ahead.
Aloha, board and community members. I'm Melanie June, Senator Gabbard's community liaison. Just a quick invitation for everybody. Senator Gabbard is having his next Listen Story meeting this Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 to 10:00 AM at the Villages of Kapole Rec Room Number One. And if you can't make it in person, we'll share a Zoom link by email. So just RSVP with us. And our guest speaker is going to be the Wall That Heals Oahu. And they are bringing the wall that heals to West Oahu. And it's the traveling three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in DC. They'll explain when it's coming, what to expect and how the neighborhood can help. And we'll also be covering some local priorities, housing updates, early learning, transportation and safety, and an open Q and A. You can bring anything that's on your mind. We are there just to listen and help. To RSVP again, you can just email our office. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions back to the senator.
Mahalo for the report. Any questions for First Vice Chair, Michaela Lindstone? And then Second Vice Chair after.
Chair, I'm just thinking with the senator being at the Villages of Kapole, that would be a great time for people at the Villages of Kapole who have concerns to voice into the senator. He has so much experience. Maybe he has some solutions or an avenue for them that they can take.
Absolutely.
Excellent suggestion. Yeah. Okay, Second Vice Chair, Gordon.
I just want to say again, and this would be to all the elected officials that are here, please consider coming to our meeting on October 22nd or watching it on TV or WebEx. Thank you.
Thank you.
For those that are wondering what that is, that's item H on Board Business. So I told Uncle, we're at 9:19. We gotta get to H. But we still have Representative Diamond Garcia in the house with us. If you'd like to comment, share a few words.
Mahalo, Chair, Board Members. I'll be quick because I know you got to run through the program. First update, update on Senator Gabbard and I co-sponsored SB 662 this past session regarding Volca and allowing HPD to start towing vehicles which were abandoned, which just sat for so long there. The good news is the ball is, is starting to roll now. Some vehicles are being towed out. There's still some left and so please have some grace with us there, but they are working on that. Second, I do want to give a shout out to Ms. Carol Ewen from the Mahana subdivision. She, she contacted our office a month ago regarding the corridor of drainage behind Mahana, between Mahana and the railroad tracks. The canal area was just filled with trees, shrubs, bushes. And in the event that a hurricane did hit us and, you know, we, we need those canals to work. And if the shrubs were there, it would have caused flooding in the area. So, so, so the good news is we worked with Councilmember Tupola's office. Thank you very much. And the riser was sent in. And just last week, Tuesday, it was cleared entirely. So it's a clean canal, good to go. Lastly, there is a nonprofit that's working with the Department of Education called Malama Mentors. And they're working with Pacific Islander High School students who are at risk at two high schools, Campbell High School and Kapole High School. And they're looking to hire part-time mentors. And so this is open to, to anyone who is willing to sit down with at-risk students and just talk about life, mentorship. And these are paid positions. It's part-time. Again, this is through Malama Mentors. If you're interested, please, please call our office or email us and we'll be more than happy to provide you with details. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Any questions, comments or concerns for Representative Garcia's office? Board Member Sheila Maderas.
I just wanted to say thank you. We didn't get an opportunity our first night here to you and Senator Gabbard and to the House Speaker and the Senate Speaker for the certificate that you gave us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing none. Last call for public input before we head to Board Business. Last call, Paul. Okay, Board Business. First resolution, supporting the development of additional postal services in Kapole. This is a resolution that we introduced last meeting. And there was some numbers that we needed to address that seemed a little off on how many homes that existed in this area. That has been subsequently corrected. Is there anyone wishing to, the chair's recommendation is to, sorry, before the chair makes a recommendation, is there anyone wishing to publicly testify? Okay, hearing none. Chair's recommendation is to adopt as circulated is their motion. It's been moved by First Vice Chair, Michaela Lindstone. Is there a second? It's been second by Sheila Maderas. Board Members' Discussion. Lots of talking happened. Just pretend we've read it. It's from last month. Okay, hearing no discussion. Chair calls to see if there's any objection to the resolution asking for more postal services because we've grown beyond the capacity. And we're expected to have 15,000 new more households by 2035. Hearing none. Okay. No objection. Chair calls it unanimous. Moving forward. Good job, gang. Next one, resolution, supporting the expansion of pesticide buffer zones. This resolution is, been worked with, with central Oahu representatives, including Amy Perusso's office. And after looking at it and what has happened in the legislature over pesticide uses, the resolution calls for an expansion of the buffer zones from the use of pesticides. Right now, there is a buffer zone of 100 feet around schools during school operating hours. That's it. So nothing around homes, playgrounds, parks, or, you know, 24 hours because pesticides don't go away. So the resolution is calling for an expansion of them, you know, so where people actually congregate, play, live, work. And, and these pesticides are the regulated level pesticides. We're not asking for like mom and dad in their garden, like in their lawns. We're talking about the pesticides that are being used by the major corporations in Hawaii, which 19 of them make up most of the restricted use pesticides. Just 19 multinational corporations. So we're asking that they, you know, don't put it by where people are. So anyone wishing to testify? Seeing no testifiers, chair's recommendation is to adopt as circulated is their motion. It's been moved by First Vice Chair. Is there a second? It's been second by Carol England. Any discussion? And pretty safe resolution, common sense. We, we get farms. We're not talking about the loon farm guys over there. We're talking about restricted use pesticides that they're supposed to be actually notifying everybody that they're using. But right now, they kind of don't because of lack of, you know, funding for the Department of Ag for enforcement, but that's another issue. We're just saying, not around people, please. Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Chair asks, is there any objection? Hearing no objection. Chair calls it unanimous. Good job. We're making good time. Next resolution is expressing gratitude to the Hawaii Pono'i Coalition for organizing Hawaiian History Month celebrations. Given that this is the first state-recognized Hawaiian History Month, we, through this resolution, is just saying mahalo to the Hawaii Pono'i Coalition, who has been champions of recognizing Hawaiian History Month for years now. And this is not their first, but their seventh organized celebrations. And in specific, we call out the fact that the Hawaii Pono'i Coalition kicked off their celebration with the honoring of Her Majesty Queen Victoria Colani's birthday for 187 years here in Kapole Hale with the Umeke art installation. So they started it here, right, right in our community. So we're just thanking them for coming and thanking them for doing good work and asking them to keep on keeping on. Anyone wishing to publicly testify about why this is a bad idea? I mean, okay, people are awake. Okay, good, good. Okay. Okay, um, is there a motion to adopt that circulated? It's been moved by Michaela Lindstone, First Vice Chair, second by Sheila Maderas. Any discussion, board members? We're just saying thank you to the people that did the good work and brought the celebrations to our area. Hearing no discussion, chair calls for objections. Hearing no objection, chair calls it unanimous. Okay, also in line with Point History Month, uh, we have a resolution that's been circulated and on Google Drive, standing in solidarity with Kamehameha Schools regarding its admission policy to give preference to Native Hawaiians to the extent permissible by law. This resolution, given the fact that the trust for Native Hawaiian children is under attack yet again, um, from people that are not from Hawaii, calling it to be against civil rights because there's a preference based on race. Notwithstanding recognizing that this was a private trust by a Native Hawaiian elite made during the Hawaiian Kingdom in eighteen eighty-three before the overthrow of the government in eighteen ninety-three, that gives preference under the extent of the law. So it's not like they're just being willy-nilly. There are non-Native Hawaiians that go to Kamehameha Schools, and that has been part of their policy for a while, including teachers that have kids. They, they go. And they also provide preference to those that are indigent and orphans. It just so happens that, uh, like, um, Native Hawaiians are also, you know, like multiracial, like it's almost every single race is represented by all of its current students. But, but all we're saying is we recognize that there's historical context and that there is a call that this seems like people pushing forward an agenda that says that we should allow whites to have native resources. And I'm saying that specifically because in the resolution, we call it like Native Hawaiian leaders and community members have recognized that this is potentially, quote-unquote, racist or white supremacist, saying that these private resources should be used for other people as well. But, yeah. Chair's recommendation, or anyone wishing to publicly testify, give us your mahalo. Um, okay, hearing none. Um, judge's recommendation is that we adopt as circulated. Is there a motion to adopt? Moved by Carol England. Is there a second? Second by, uh, Dr. Dudley. And Sheila Maderas, third. Um, is there any discussion? All we're saying is, again, preference because it's a private trust for Native Hawaiians that are not just Native Hawaiians. Not to mention that they use no federal or state funding or government funding. Okay, um, hearing no discussion. Uh, is there any objection? Hearing no objection. Chair calls it unanimous. Good job. Next resolution on establishing a PIG for disaster preparedness, including community resiliency hubs in the Ever region. Um, last month, we had a similar resolution, and that was referred to the Environmental Justice Committee to work out some language. This resolution that's been circulated is, um, a proposed language that we're going to refer or commit to the Environmental Justice Committee to just take a look at. So, uh, we're giving them some other materials to look at. Uh, is there anyone wishing to publicly testify on the fact that we're just giving them some more things to consider? Okay, hearing no one wishing to publicly testify, um, chair's recommendation is that we refer to the committee. Is there any objection? Is there any discussions first? Okay, yes, Sheila Maderas, go ahead.
Just curious why it's just Ever region?
So the, the, the reason why it's the Ever region in this, uh, PIG is because the previous PIG was, was a partnership with the Ever Neighborhood Board focusing on community resiliency hubs just for this region. The concerns that was brought up by Environmental Justice Chair and former PIG member Kyoni Dudley, Dr. Dudley, was that, disaster preparedness is an issue for like everybody, so we should consider that as well. So, yes, so we should consider one for talking with, uh, everyone on Oahu, uh, which again leads into the recommendation that the committee may make um, for the October twenty-two special meeting if it is approved later on. For, uh, inter-board beyond the Ever region for island-wide stuff. But to also honor the requests from the Ever Neighborhood Board to continue working specifically on Ever region, um, that's the reason why this PIG is being considered for standing up. So we can talk about island-wide stuff with everybody, but then it would be funny kind if we're just talking about Ever stuff with everybody, and they're like, well, what about us? So we can talk about island-wide things with one group and Ever stuff with the other group. Don't worry, it's all the same people. We gotta set up PIG so we don't run afoul of the Sunshine Law, which we'll get into later because we, we have an appeal that we have to go over. So it's just so that we can talk story and keep everything all straight or non-conforming. Okay, um, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Any objections to referring this over? Hearing none. Chair has called it unanimous. Hey, now, um, to a matter regarding our meeting rules and guidelines, for presenters on WebEx, um, so there's to either have their cameras turned on, share their slides during their presentations, or both. So there's been requests by multiple members of the community, um, to, um, be able to see people if, if can. So, um, we are now taking that up for consideration, and is there anyone wishing to publicly testify on whether or not people should show their face on the camera if can? Or show their slides? Um, seeing no one from the public, chair's recommendation is that we do, um, um, adopt this new guideline to the extent permissible by law because there are some requirements that telephonics, right? So if people call in on the phone, cannot, cannot show, but we still gotta let them have access. Is there a motion to, uh, adopt requiring presenters on WebEx to either have their cameras turned on, share their slides during their presentations, or both to the extent permissible by law? It's been moved by Dr. Dudley, second by Michaela Lindstone. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Is there any objection to asking people to show their beautiful faces? Hearing none. Uh, chair calls it unanimous. Great. Now, going on to, um, gee, regarding the Thursday, September fourth, twenty twenty-five letter from the Office of Information Practice, um, the Neighborhood Board received a letter of complaint alleging that the Neighborhood Board was in violation of, um, the Sunshine Law by discussing board business, um, in a not permitted way, which is like the PIGs be setting up. Or if I'm only communicating to one board member to another board member, so only two board members, so that's permitted. Um, and that they're alleging that it was business that was before us, and the business is, um, something that is, um, either on the agenda or reasonably, uh, expected to come on the agenda. And this is over email communications that, um, Dr. Dudley, um, made to several board members, um, as a call to action for people to show up to an informational briefing at the city council, um, regarding, um, the the, regarding, uh, interim use racetrack, um, in Kalailoa next to some housing. So, whoo, that was, if you're interested in all of the details, you can go and look at all of the Google Drive documents. So at this time, um, the OIP is asking for an official response um, from the Neighborhood Board, um, to include a statement of facts, an explanation of our position, any evidence, um, and who's the contact person. So is there anyone wishing to publicly testify on what we're going to discuss? And hopefully authorize the chair to respond to the OIP on the allegation? Anybody want to put their two cents in? If you have facts from the community first. Okay, hearing none from the community, public testimony, pow. Now, uh, chair would like to open up for, uh, anyone on the board that would like to share their perspective on what happened and, um, and, um, yes. And then I'll have a series of questions that I'll be able to then report back to the Office of Information Practice that I asked and, uh, and, uh, provide them with the requested information. So I will yield to Dr. Dudley, I saw his hand up, for a statement of what he would like to us to consider putting forward.
Um, okay, in the first place, I want to make it very clear that when I contacted the board about this, it was not about business before the board, nor business that could be anticipated as coming before the board. This was something the board had handled a couple of years ago. Uh, and we made very clear decisions on it, and it was now being handled by the city council. There was absolutely no possibility that it would ever come back before our board since the city council was strongly behind it. And so, uh, the, um, you know, Mr. Kobian, uh, if anybody knows him, you want to be very careful because, uh, he likes to really kill you dead. You know, you cross him and you're going to have it for life. Um, and I just want to say, you know, that, uh, it's, it's a ridiculous claim and that, uh, we need to say that, uh, we are not guilty of that at all in any way whatsoever, for those reasons.
Thank you for that. Um, is there any other board member wishing to make a statement regarding the situation before I ask a series of questions? Chair recognizes First Vice Chair Michaela Lindstone.
I feel there was no violation. Dr. Dudley was sharing with the board that there's a meeting that discussed the community issue. That's all.
Anyone else before I start my questions? Um, okay, uh, okay, go right ahead, Sheila Maderas. And just making statements about the situation. We're not discussing what we're gonna share.
Yeah, I, I agree. It was board, it wasn't board business that was coming up or you, you know, um, future. So I don't think this is related. Um, I don't think there was any violation myself.
Okay, so now I will make a statement, and then I'll ask a series of questions. Oh, actually, I will ask a series of questions, then I'll make a statement. Um, has any board member, um, to their knowledge, sent a communication to the chair asking for the interim racetrack, um, in Kalailoa that Mr. Corvian is already in the process of working with the city of Honolulu to actually have happen, uh, come before us? Okay, to the best of your knowledge. Have any of you asked me to, uh, put it up on the agenda, something that we should consider? Or have anybody asked you to? To ask the chair to put this on the agenda? Okay, no, no. Okay, so, and from the chair's own knowledge, because, you know, I'm the one that received communications. I've received no requests from Mr. Corvian to put it on the agenda. I've received no requests from any elected official. I've request, no requests from board members. I request, I haven't, we received a request from anybody to put the interim racetrack onto the agenda. Um, so, and I did not, I did not plan on having it on the agenda, um, for reasons earlier stated by Dr. Dudley, which is the Neighborhood Board has taken a position previously, and nobody asked, and we get plenty things for do. So, okay, um, with that, um, the chair would beg the, the board to allow me to write up the position that we do not believe that it was board business, um, being discussed because of the fact that it was not on the agenda nor asked by anyone on the board or otherwise to have it on the agenda in the near future or at any time, actually. Yes, Dr. Dudley, go ahead.
I do think it ought to be mentioned also, though, that, um, what was the thought? I'm sorry, I, I just can't remember what I was gonna say.
Was, was you gonna say, um, that we should mention that the board took a position on this?
That was it, yes. Yeah, that was years old.
Yep. So, okay, so I will present that what I've shared, uh, if it would please the board, and I can write it up in the next few days, and then authorize me to be the point of contact with the OIP regarding our official response, uh, to the Office of Information Practices, representing our interests, given the conversation we had now, which is, nobody asked. Even the guy that said we was gonna have it on, never asked. And we, we are booked out with multiple people asking to be on our agenda, so. Okay, um, yes, uh, so at this time, the chair would, um, beg a motion to authorize the chair to draft and submit the official response of Neighborhood Board Thirty-Four to the OIP to represent Neighborhood Thirty-Four regarding Appeal Twenty-Six-O-Four, taking into account the the attestations of the board members and the discussions, um, from tonight. It's been moved by Board Member Michaela Lindstone, seconded by Board Member Sheila Maderas. Is there any discussion? Last, is anyone from the public wishing to testify, just in case somebody like do an OIP because we never do this appropriately, like anybody wanting to testify on this? Okay, hearing no one wishing to testify. Hearing no further discussion. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Chair calls it unanimous. Okay. Awesome. Now, let's get to H, the special slash joint meeting for October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Um, at this point, uh, I would like to, um, ask, um, Second Vice Chair, Dr. Kyoni Dudley, to share with the, um, board, um, what he imagines and would like to see at an October twenty-twenty-second joint and special meeting.
Let me say first of all that if anybody wants to take a look at the resolutions, they're right here. And, uh, everybody on the board has a copy. Um, we decided last, uh, meeting that the October twenty-second, uh, meeting would take place on the twenty-second so that it could be our monthly meeting. And so we're expecting that everybody on the board will be at the monthly meeting. Now, the difference is, for you folks that are here, we're not going to meet here. We're going to meet over at Hono Uli Uli Intermediate School. Uh, you know where the end of the rail line is and where Croc Center is. It's across the street from Croc Center inside of the, uh, Ho'opili area there. We're also going to meet at six thirty, not at seven. They require us to be completely out of there by nine o'clock, which will make an awful lot of people happy. Um, but, uh, so we're going to go six thirty to eight thirty. Uh, we're expecting that, um, it's going to be on WebEx. We've made arrangements already with the people who do the shooting here. And we're going to also, uh, uh, David Jones, uh, from, uh, this, uh, organization that does our taping, uh, is the producer of that, and he is asking Olelo to show it live. It's a very important meeting. Uh, what we need to realize is that our government has, uh, spent thousands and millions of dollars on cleanup and that they are ready to clean up after the hurricane and bury all of us. Uh, the problem is, we don't want to die, and we don't want to be burying the corpses of our relatives and friends. We want to live, and the only way to live is to get some shelters. And we do not have a single shelter on this island that will withstand a category-two hurricane. With the, with the category-one, they expect two hundred thousand people to seek shelters, but they only have shelters for one hundred thousand. And they can't call them shelters because they're not strong enough to withstand more than a category-two hurricane. And they can't call them shelters because they're not strong enough to withstand more than a category-one. So there's nowhere for any of us to go. And we're finally bringing neighborhood boards together and saying enough is enough. We absolutely insist that we want shelters. We want money for, um, uh, fortifying homes. So, um, we've written up some resolutions here and some calls to action. We're expecting that, uh, we're going to have at least five boards at the present time and possibly as many as ten, although that was probably be stretching it. Uh, a lot of those boards are not coming in their entire board presence, but they're coming as, uh, uh, permitted action groups. So they'll bring enough people to, uh, vote. Now, what we're asking the boards to do is to vote on this resolution ahead of time. And that way, when they come, they can, instead of having the discussion of the resolution at this time, they've already voted. And, and, and we know that, that, that we can ask them, "Do you, did your board vote and do you support this resolution, these resolutions and these calls to action?" And, uh, you know, that's at the very end of the meeting. It's going to be a, a two-hour meeting crammed with all kinds of information. We're going to have all kinds of, uh, people from government there, and we're, we really expect change. So, you know, at the end, we're going to take a united stand based on the votes that go on at the previous meeting, which is tonight for us. Uh, and, and, um, that we will ta- take a, to stand in solidarity with all of those boards there, saying, "This is what we demand." So, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd really like to have the board, um, vote on this resolution, these resolutions and the call to action tonight. We would be the first board, because we're the first ones meeting this month, but we've got every other board that's going to participate has a meeting coming up, and we hopefully will vote, uh, they would vote too. Uh, I'd be happy to go over these resolutions, uh, 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 you, uh, have had a copy though for, uh, several days, and I presume that everybody has read it. Would you like me to go over the material? Then let, let, let me, let me also say, uh, the reason I want to put this on the, the board right now is, of course, we want to get it passed, but, uh, it, it isn't something that is a major thing that affects our area. It's statewide, you know? We're asking for shelters in, in thirty-four, uh, neighborhood board areas. Uh, we're, um, and, and since this is something that really has a, a great effect on the statewide and only a tiny effect on us, I think it's something that could be put on the agenda without any, uh, problem.
Okay, um, thank you for the, um, presentation about the potential for a joint meeting with other neighborhood boards for their permitted interaction groups at our regularly scheduled time and potentially moving location to the elementary school. And that it be a special meeting focused on disaster or emergency preparedness, self-focusing on hurricanes. So, so that's what I've heard from the presentation, and the request also is to add to the agenda, um, resolutions that you have circulated to other board members, um, regarding positions to take that we would announce at the next meeting. Is that well summed up? Okay, okay, um, with that, so regarding us taking a position on setting up a special and joint meeting, I think we can have the discussion and vote, no problem. And regarding, um, voting on resolutions, uh, as you've circulated, um, that wasn't appropriately agendized, um, there is, uh, prohibition, because the Sunshine Law only allows for two exemptions, if you're adding this. The first is if there's an event, that's an emergency that necessitates us taking the position. And the second is if it doesn't affect have a, um, affect a lot of people and it's not something major. And from your own previous statements, you shared that it's something major, it affects the whole state, just so. So it's, it's, uh, if we do, uh, take that action, um, to add it to the agenda, uh, we would likely be in the, in the opinion of the chair knowingly violating the Sunshine Law and, and would be, um, held to have our position appealed and rescinded, um, not just by OIP, but the court of law, so. So at this time, I would say that it's out of order to add the other two items, um, for us to vote on this evening. I think it's totally fine for us to, uh, you, for you to present the material, so everybody can hear it. Um, but we cannot have even discussion or, um, questions and answers, because again, that's a prohibition under the Sunshine Law, because it wasn't previously agendized, and it doesn't meet either of the exemptions. Yes, Dr. Dudley?
Uh, Mr. Chair, when you consider that if we don't take this vote, uh, it's really going to tear the whole meeting apart, because other boards are going to say, "Oh, they didn't vote, we don't have to too." And when you consider the thousands of lives that are going to be lost because we don't have, um, hurricane shelters and we don't have fortified homes, there is major reason why we should do it. And, and we really must do it tonight. We really must. I, 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 I beg the people on this board to, to really think about, you know, we're destroying everything, uh, uh, we're, we're just gonna destroy the meeting.
Okay, so procedurally, what you could do, because the chair ruled that your motion would, is out of order, because it would be a violation of the Sunshine Law under HRS ninety-two. And if you want to look at the references in our meeting rules and guidelines, everybody can follow on number eight. It gives you the criteria, um, about what the board may add. So if you want, procedurally, you can appeal the ruling of the chair and see if the two-thirds of the board, uh, uh, agree with you that it doesn't violate the Sunshine Law, and then we can take it from there.
Okay, I, I would like to do that.
So I hear that is a call for appealing the ruling of the chair. At this time, um, there is, is there anyone wishing to publicly testify? Because we have to, again, invite you to come and throw in your two cents. Yeah, come on down. Come on down. Again, I'm, I'm, we're not talking about the merits of what Uncle is talking about, right? Like, which I think all of us are on the same, we just gotta, otherwise we're gonna do what we did tonight again. Go right ahead.
I'm Fiona Beckley, and I live up in, um, Makakilo, uh, Palihua Hali. Um, I really think that this is something that, like you say, doctor, that the other, we, I guess we're the first ones to, to take this issue up at a meeting. And I say that we really should go ahead and do it, because everybody else is gonna do it, and this is something that's so, so important, that we really need to all be together when we meet. So I, I really would recommend that we just go ahead and do it. Thank you.
Uh, going online for testimony from Johnny May Perry, go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair Johnny May Perry. Um, you have Jeffrey there as Andy, um, he can give you some valuable input on your current dis- discussion. Thank you.
Okay, um, Johnny May Perry just put, um, the day board system on, on, on blast. But, um, let me say, um, that I, I did see this issue coming up, and I did speak with the NCO, including Executive Secretary Lloyd Yonanaka, and he shared with me that he was of the opinion that this would not be a good idea because of reasons, but formally, he's, he said that he does not believe it meets the criteria. Again, he is not the Office of Information Practice. Um, they may say that it is my mani and it doesn't affect a lot of people and it meets the exemptions, but, uh, we did not ask OIP to respond. So, so not putting you on the spot, but your boss said that you don't think so. Okay, go right on to Dr. Dudley.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Lloyd Yonanaka, the same man, told me, "Go ahead with it." Okay? He, he understands how important it is. He said, you know, "The Office of Information Practices may be, uh, they can come after you, but if you want to, go ahead with it." Okay?
Mahalo, and, and, um, we have Executive Secretary Lloyd Yonanaka online, so he'll ask if you would like to, um, clarify for us, um, because maybe he has some misunderstanding or miscommunication as we all try to figure out OIP and the new quote, the new, the new letter and guidance that they provided, that upended decades of practice for the neighborhood boards a few months ago, so. Okay, Executive Secretary, please, you can speak for yourself.
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, you are correct in that it is a violation of the Sunshine Law if you take this item up and vote on it now. It wasn't on the agenda. It is of a major importance. It affects everybody, as this board has said. So therefore, it is an important topic that deserves to be placed on the agenda before the meeting, so that the public can understand and know what is going to be discussed. Um, I know you have some information regarding, um, the, the resolutions to be considered. And my question is, do the board members have this resolution and these resolutions? And does the public have these resolutions? And if the public does not have the resolutions, then that really is not the right thing to do. The purpose of Sunshine Law is to make sure the public knows ahead of time what you will be discussing so that they can chime in with their opinion and provide their opinion on, on whatever subject you're talking about. Um, that being said, I just want to address Mr. Dudley. Um, it has been a little bit frustrating to discuss this issue with him, because I realized his passion, and he's running down the field with this, and a lot of the things aren't in place. And I've asked him a number of times, like, "Do you have seven boards committed?" And the answer was, "No." Well, then don't talk about seven boards. You don't want to put them on the hook to say, "I got seven boards, these are the boards," and they haven't even decided yet. So, you know, I'm a little bit frustrated, because what I told Mr. Dudley was very simply, "You shouldn't discuss it, but at the same time, it is your board, it is your meeting, and nobody listens to us anyway. When we tell you, 'Don't do something,' you go ahead and do it anyway." So the point of it all is that it is your board, it is your decision. I recommend not to, because it violates Sunshine Law. But if this board says, "We don't care, we're gonna just vote," fine. That's your board, that's your decision. And, and that's what I wanted to impress upon Mr. Dudley. If your board decides, "We're gonna go anyway, we don't care what Sunshine Law says, we don't care what the rules are," then I'm not gonna stop you, because I can't stop you. I, I'm not authorized to say, "No, you cannot do this." But if you ask my opinion, I would put it on the agenda for the next meeting, uh, very simply. My second question would be, does it, must it, must it occur on October twenty-second? Can you push this thirty days into the next, into the next month? You know, uh, and give everybody a little bit more time to understand exactly what you're after. The third, the third thing I asked him to do was, make everything simple, so everybody can understand it. And in that case, you don't need eleven items, what you need is one resolution. And I thought the resolution about beefing up the, uh, the, uh, the schools to be hurricane-proof, I thought that was great, because the, the structure is not that you're building from scratch. You, you're already there, you know you need the facilities. I would make that the focal point and say, "Our resolution says, State of Hawaii, please beef up the schools so that it can stand against a hurricane. We need that, we need that in case we have a, a hurricane hit us." Take that, pass it on your board, and if you want to have a joint meeting on that, but that's the only thing you should talk about, because otherwise it gets so complicated. And if you got eleven items on the, on the agenda, you're not gonna get done in two hours, like, like, or two and a half hours that you guys have the place reserved for. And that's the worst thing, is because you will talk and nothing happens. So I would ask, just take that one item. Please fortify the schools to withstand hurricanes, so we can use the schools as a shelter. And I would take that, and I would run to every board and ask them, "Can you please pass this?" And once, and I would think they would all be in agreement. Who would disagree with trying to fort- fortify the schools to make it hurricane-proof so the public can use it? Take all of those, pass resolution from all the boards, and then I would go to the legislature and th- and give it to all the legislators, and give it to the governor, and say, "We know this cannot be done in one day, but we can start. Can you dedicate some funds and let's do a study on what it would take to fortify at least one facility in each district, in each area of the island? And that's the beginning." And I, and at the same time, I really, you know, I, Kyoni, I've known you forever, and I understand your passion. It's just that sometimes we just gotta go step by step by step, and you can get there. We just can't go, we just can't take that big leap. So to go and wrap up everything, I don't think it, it's not proper for you guys to make a decision on this tonight. At the same time, it is your board, it is your meeting. If you decide, "We're gonna go and vote," okay, your choice. But I'm just telling you, I don't think it's proper. Um, second is, I would look at pushing it another thirty days and, and see if we can do that, your joint meeting in November. But I would use that time to pass something at your board that you can go to every other board or talk to every other chair and say, "Can you put this on your agenda?" You know, and by the way, I have the chair's meeting coming up in a week and a half or something, so I would love to talk about it at that time. That, hey, you know, you guys pass this resolution, I, and I agree, I don't disagree. We don't have enough facilities, and let's face it, when it comes to emergencies, you never prepare, and you find out you're not prepared after the emergency. Right? I mean, the wildfires are, are a prime example. Um, the point is, if you can pass it, push it thirty days, great. If you can whittle it down to one basic statement that you can get everybody to agree with, and you can go to every board and present it, I think that'll be great. I think, I think you got something that at one point or another, you will have every board behind you. And that, going to the legislature, is powerful. When you can say, "Every board passed this exact same resolution. Please fortify the schools to help us during an emergency." Sorry, I, I get it, I, you know, getting into the strategy on how you guys should attack this, and maybe that's, I don't, that's not my place to do.
After the meeting, after the meeting.
Yeah, after the meeting, after the meeting, yeah, yeah. Anyway, um, thank you for, thank you for your time.
Mahalo, Executive Secretary, for providing your feedback and clarifying position that you believe that it would be a violation of Sunshine Law. Again, we're speaking to the appeal, uh, of the ruling of the chair, which is, it's a violation of the Sunshine Law for us to add it at this time and then vote. Given the time, and we have to, given the time at this point, and, uh, the chair would ask that, uh, is there any final discussion before the vote on the appeal? Okay, hearing none. Sorry? Go right ahead, Dr. Dudley. We are over time, and, uh, the chair is gonna call the vote.
Okay, I just do want to say that I gave you, Mr. Chair, the entire set of stuff to put on the agenda, specific words to put on the agenda, a week ago. You did not put it on the agenda. I feel that you are sabotaging our meeting. That is my basic, basic feeling, and I don't know why.
Mahalo, appreciate your perspective and opinion. And I would also clarify that the neighborhood board authorized you to engage with Manakuli and Waianae Neighborhood Boards to discuss the issue of Atlantis. But now we're discussing hurricane preparedness, which we did two years ago.
Shut the minister. Shut the minister.
Hey, 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 hey. You want to say that I am sabotaging the meeting? Which all my kuli'ana is, is to make sure that we follow the appropriate protocol to be able to uplift the voices of our community. Everybody has to play by the rules, including you, including. So at this time, then, the vote is whether or not the board would like to overrule me because that's the rules. You guys can. So I will take a roll call vote at this time.
Okay, so for the roll call vote of adding these um, items onto the agenda for tonight to get uh, to be voted on, um, I'm going to go down the list of the order I have, uh, Board Member England. So it's to add the um, the materials, the resolutions and the call to action that are going to be presented at the October, or the proposed October 22nd special joint meeting. It's to vote on those specific resolutions and materials in preparation for that meeting.
So to clarify, Dr. Dudley, a board member, asked to put onto this agenda two resolutions and 11 action items. Right? The chair ruling was that it is in violation of the sunshine law, so therefore it is out of order. The vote now is if you agree with the chair to sustain the ruling, it's like, then you vote aye. If you want, sorry, if you want to overrule the chair's ruling, you vote aye. If you want to sus- to, to make sure that it goes on the agenda, you vote aoleh. You vote no. So aye is, it's against the rules. We can't add it.
Okay, so I'll go down the list that I have with that.
To sustain the ruling of the chair's, this is my ruling. Do you guys agree?
No.
No, 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 to overrule me.
To overrule is a aye?
I'm sorry, it's after, we're over time. If you vote, two, two-thirds of you have to say yes to overrule me. So you have to vote aye to put it on the agenda. You, you vote no if you agree with the chair. Okay?
Okay, with that clarification, Board Member England.
Do respect with what you're trying to do, but we have to adhere to the law. So sunshine law, I say no.
Board Member Dudley?
Aye.
Board Member Ferreira? Going once. I do not see him online any longer, so he will not be counted. Board Member Kaheli online? Board Member Kaheli, are you available to vote for this uh, roll call vote? He will not be included as well. Uh, Lidstone? Ta'ala, online? Chair Paris?
A'oleh.
And Board Member Darius?
A'oleh.
With that uh, roll call vote, the chair's position to not have it added to the agenda is the deciding vote.
At this time, even that we are over time, um, the, everything on the rest of the business is deferred to the October 22nd meeting. And at this time, the October 22nd meeting, unless otherwise circulated, is still here at Kapoleh Hule, which may or may not be a special meeting. But that is at the discretion of the chair because the board didn't clarify at this point. Unless we have a special meeting in the interim, which Dr. Dudley can request that we have so that we can then discuss how to make all of these things that you would like to do happen. So there are ways to do it. And with that, I defer everything and speaking to Olelo, do we have time to sing Hoi Aloha or no? So we can sing Hoi Aloha and it's not going to be there. So at this time, we are in recess. All those that need to head out, great. And for those that are staying before we officially adjourn, let's sing Hoi Aloha. With the words, that's why we're using the video with Zoom magic. Never have the words on top. For those of us that never know the second or third verses, without the closed caption, a little bit difficult. But mahalo all for staying and share with us, we're out of recess. And at this time, um, mahalo Nui'lo. Please enjoy refreshments in celebration of Hoi History Month, and everyone have a wonderful evening. The meeting is adjourned. Aloha, malamupono alohano.